My little steak hards.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the April 20th Planning Commission meeting in the city of Charleston. My name is Charlie Carrison, Chairman of the Commission, joined today by Mr. Aaron Lasain, his Vice Chairman, Mr. Jimmy Bailey Jr., Mr. Cletus Bryan Jenkins, Ms. Donna Jacobs, and Ms. Kenan Joyce. I think Ms. Lepus will be joining us. Here she is. She may be running a little bit late. And I think Ms. Harrison may be here as well, Erica Harrison.
I understand she will be.
So I'll just read that into the record. You'll be here. The Commission members or volunteers reported by Charleston City Council. I know you joined me in thanking them for their work. The way we were going to run the meeting tonight is I'm going to introduce an item from the agenda into the record. Then we'll hear from the applicants. Then we'll hear from anyone in favor of the, first, excuse me. First, we'll hear from staff. And they'll give us a recommendation. Sorry, Chris. And then we'll hear from the applicant. And they'll get us, they'll read their plea into the record. And then we'll hear from anyone in support of the application. Then we hear from anyone opposed to the application. Then we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to any concerns that were read out there. At that point, we'll close the public hearing. The Commission members will discuss, make motions, ask questions. There's always that lingering that someone wants to ask a question after closing the public hearing. I can't acknowledge you then, so please know, I'm not trying to be rude, but once we close the public hearing, because it's public, we can't go back and forth. It won't be productive. I just want to let you know that. I'd ask if you have, and I'll do that now myself, if you have a phone, please shut it off or turn on silent. And I'll be the first one to do it because I usually don't. So then I'll ask Mr. Morgan, Christopher Morgan, to introduce any staff that would be presenting tonight. And also let us know if there's any changes to the agenda.
And just from a staff standpoint, my name is Christopher Morgan. I'm planning manager here at the city of Charleston. Also helping with the presentations tonight will be Lee Batchelor, our zoning administrator. Philip Overpass is also helping, our senior planner. Our office will be doing some presentations. Chloe Stuper is helping. Philip Plapper is our perk. We also have Eric Pullman, who's our West Ashley coordinator here, and Molly Jones, who's our annexation planner for West Ashley and other parts of the city, is here tonight as well. As far as deferrals, we have a couple of those, and those are the zoning, 24 North Market Street is deferred from this agenda. And then under subposition property conversion, Zero Castle Lane Road is deferred as well.
Come as close to the microphone as you can. Everything's being recorded for a good clerk we have here. And he needs to hear your name. If you tell us who you represent, if you're representing someone like a neighborhood association, please let us know that, or representing a client, let us know that, and also your address. And the first item on the agenda is rezonings. You know what? Before we do that, I'm going to let Ms. Jacobs here ask for a second, and I think it's appropriate for you to do that now. Ms. Jacobs, if you have words you want to say.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge, once again, Ms. Janice Shaw Johnson's award for the Woman of the Year. Your office works so diligently with us, and we have this affordable housing sort of assist that we've taken up in the Seton Island City Plan, and I just thought, once again, to hear that you've won that award, and you do great.
And because we plan to keep you, we set up a lot of pressure on you for ideas and solutions, so thank you for your work. Number one on the agenda is rezoning, 357 and 9 Cunningham Avenue, Magnolia Cemetery, Peninsula TMS number 46.
414-00119 and 129, approximately 1.16 acres. Rest rezoning from light industrial, I'll put Peninsula U.P. And from the 2.5-story Old City Height District to the 412-story Old City Height District. Mr. Morgan?
Chairman, and speaking of affordable housing, well, this is a site that we are working on, and Ms. Johnson has been working on, and has found this site, and hope to have a very good project going into here. We do need to get a rezoning underway on this. It was some light industrial in the past. This was an area that was studied for our Upper Peninsula zoning, but because there were existing residences on the site, things like that, we didn't put it into that zoning category. But now that we own it and would like to have the affordable housing, the Upper Peninsula zoning does make a lot of sense to have on the site. And then, of course, the Height District corresponds to all our other Upper Peninsula zoning. It's the 412 Height District. And Ms. Johnson could talk a little bit about what is planned on the site. I don't think we're going to be able to get that entire Height District, or that entire allowance of Height, but I wasn't getting into that in a few minutes. But just to orient you all, this is just off of Upper Meeting Street Road, if you can see my cursor here. It is a little bit north of Mount Pleasant Street. There's a new multifamily development just south of the image here that is underway, adjacent to the Sante's Restaurant. The Joseph Floyd Manor is on the other side of the street, a little bit further down. So it's definitely an area that's seeing new housing created. There also are plans for the property to the north. It is Upper Peninsula zone here for more multifamily here. So it's definitely an area that's in transition, and some of the light industrial uses that are here are slowly kind of dissipating, and it's becoming a little bit more of a residential area outside of the already existing cemeteries. In our comprehensive plan, it does show as our job center, because it had that light industrial zoning on it at the time. We did not purchase it at the time. But as we look at this area, knowing that it was originally studied as part of the Upper Peninsula zoning district, we felt that to have it for affordable housing, it's going to continue to be owned by the city, so we will be in control of it. So we will make sure it will always be affordable housing. We felt that that outweighed the original designation in the comprehensive plan for the job center on the site. The, here's a description of what Job Center also does, and talks a little bit about it. But we are going for something that's more of a residential nature in this location. This is the Upper Peninsula study area, and you can see where this parcel and parcels around it were studied for the Upper Peninsula and recommended to be part of the Upper Peninsula area. And that was done, I can think about, in 2015. Property itself is now vacant. There were some older housing duplexes that have been torn down. It is a high and dry site. It does have an auto repair facility next door. And there's a small cemetery area on the northeast corner, and then another office building to the east over here. Across the street, of course, is more cemeteries in this whole overall town cemetery district. Here's an aerial that shows a little bit broader view. Street view, Cunningham is a very low-traffic street at present. You're looking out towards Meeting Street. Yeah, next door, automotive repair. And just a comparison of the different categories in the Upper Peninsula versus the light industrial, which would have also allowed multifamily, but it just did not work overall as well as the Upper Peninsula's. So our staff recommendation is for affordable, and Ms. Johnson, I think, wanted to say a few things.
Thank you all for your dedication and the work that you do for the city of Charleston. So we're really excited about this opportunity that we closed on last year. We purchased this property for the purposes of building multifamily rental housing here. You all are well aware of the challenges we face relative to affordable housing in our community. At this site, the goal is to provide a diversity of affordable housing, meaning that we will address incomes as little as 30% of the area meeting income, up to 80% of the area meeting income at the site. Our goal is to build at least 90 or have 90 units contained in this building. We won't go up as high as the zoning will allow naturally, because the higher you go, the more cost. So our goal is to make sure we have approximately four floors. Parking will be available on the site. And again, we will provide that diversity of housing. Our goal as well here is to conduct a request for proposals so that we have a development team come in and prepare basically what the city has envisioned. And in part of that visioning process, we're working very closely with our planning department and our design center to come up with a final strategy before it is released for a request for proposal. In addition to the units that will be, or the apartments that will be provided within the building, naturally, we'll have an amenity center, which is usually contained in apartment buildings. But in addition to that, we are contemplating one part of that bottom floor having a coffee shop or a small little super rent grocery store, something that will supply opportunities for the residents that live in the building. So very simple there on that bottom floor. We will also divide a portion of this site for what we are referring to as our Hope Center. And that Hope Center will provide one-stop services for our unsheltered neighbors. And we will have within that building about six staff members from the city of Charleston, and then approximately eight or more service providers or organizations that provide services to our homeless population to help them transition from homelessness to housing. They will come on an alternate basis as that center is open. So this particular site will provide a number of uses. Certainly, the very important aspect of it is that we will help to provide the number of units that are so needed in our community. And I'm glad that I answered any questions we're throwing.
Maybe, I know you don't have that worked out. Just curious about approximately number of units.
Yeah, 90. Yes, sir. 90 is our goal. We would love to have more. We could have more. But usually, yeah, usually when persons are seeking to build these, they are going to pursue low-income housing tax credits from state housing. State housing will only allow for 90 in their funding grant.
Thank you, Mayor.
Shawson, these are just rent units, not for something?
Yes. Typically, the process that the city uses now, we will conduct the request for proposals, and the developer that is selected or chosen enters into a ground lease for the city. The ones that we've done more recently have lasted for 60 years. But at the end of that 60 years, the city gets back the improvements as well as its land. So it remains affordable for perpetuity.
Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Easy, that'll close the public aspect of this. Commission members have questions, comments, motions?
I'll move for approval.
Ms. Lasain moves for approval.
I'll second.
Ms. Lepus of seconds, any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor. What is easy? We don't do a roll call vote anymore for the record. Would you like us? Okay, so I'd ask, yeah, just a voice vote, or how about raise your right hand if you're in favor of that? Thank you. I think that's unanimous vote. Thank you all. Number two, as we said, is deferred to, we own the general rezoning, 77 and 75 Washington Street, Ports area, Peninsula TMS number 4591302004 and 005, approximately 2.35 acres. Request rezoning from General Business CB to next use workforce housing, NU2WH.
And this is a site that is adjacent to a site that we all had reviewed a few months ago. It is now done, due to workforce housing, which is right here in the blue. It is on the site of a former warehouse that took up some space here. There is a piece of land that will be a new lay-down yard for the Mollows plumbing supply that will be right in here. And this property is now due to workforce housing, and now the request is for an adjoining parcel that would be part of the same development. And you will also have on your agenda another parcel that's here at the front, at East Bay in Charlotte. I don't know if you all want to take those together, but we can kind of talk about them together because they're in the same time period.
I'm going to read that as I'm talking.
Sure, sure.
So number four, reading the, the record is H. Charlotte Street, Ports area, Peninsula TMS number 4591302009, approximately 22 acres. Request rezoning from General Business CB to next use workforce housing, NU2WH.
Bay, Charlotte Street is right here. Ports Authority is over here in the heavy industrial zone areas. There's a retail center down here to the south. There's some offices, and I think a couple of residences on some of these older buildings on Charlotte. Maybe a residence here, office, I'm not sure. Let's use, we'll choose some street views of that one. And then the Mollows Supply Plumbing Supply is up here to the north, and there's some other retail businesses across the street. This is in our city center recommendation, which is the densest, most intense category in our new comprehensive plan, as is the property at the corner of East Bay and Charlotte. The city center recommendations are here. That's the range from 10 units dwelling against an acre up. And here is an image, aerial image of the property. There is an older structure here that VAR is looking at. I believe they have, you know, what they're working on, that structure. There is also a house that fronts Charlotte Street here. And then on the adjoining parcel, it's also for rezoning, is a 1990s, I think, era bank teller drive-through facility. We'll see some other images of that in just a minute here. You can see the Ports Authority facility here, the Mollows Supply here. This lay-down yard is moving up here to this location. This building has been demolished now. And some of the other retail that's to the south here, also in East Bay. Washington Street, there is a part of the property, and another structure that's on the property there present. This is looking across Washington Street to the Ports Authority, looking over towards East Bay from Washington Street. Just a comparison of the densities and allowances in the general business versus the NU2WH. It is unlimited density, but it is capped by the amount of height, the amount of stories or height that you have on the site. Our recommendation is approval for both of these because of the concurrence with our comprehensive plan. I will just go through the slides for the H. Charlotte and same location, same plan, recommendation. Just here, here you see a little bit better image of bank drive-through that's in this location. This view from Space Street, and it's from Charlotte, and again, that was a recommendation for people on that one.
I do not, oh, the Vice Chairman was saying, unless it's Jack, they like to take these both together. Let's ask, and ask concern, say not occasion, applicant of both of them. The applicant like to speak to us tonight, Mr. Horford?
Good afternoon. Thanks, sir. Nice to be your person for change. I've been sitting on that porch, joining these Zoom meetings for a couple of years now. I'm working with Green Room Partners. We've been able to-
Just for the record, you Hank offered. I know that.
Hank offered, I'm sorry. Working with Green Room Partners, we've been able to work with Mr. Tony Mollough to trade his lay-down yard and slide over. So now we adjoin these two properties. Christopher described both properties. They're relatively abandoned. They do have some structures on them. One of them's a 1970s bank building that will be removed. So we're asking for workforce housing. We made the same commitment to include at least 10% of the required workforce housing in these buildings, along with what we committed to the same in the building next door. So we'd like to kind of design them together. We're working with Lynn Keys to see what we can do with the existing structure, historical structure on Washington Street. And, you know, it's in pretty bad shape. Not much to say, but we've at least made a commitment to see what we can do with that. There's really not much more. We're not asking for any height, additional heights on this building. And, you know, today, they're pretty underutilized properties, so we think that we will serve the city for some housing. If you have any questions, please let me know, and James Wilson's here also to represent the partners.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application?
I don't know that I'm in favor or opposition, but I would like to-
Well, why don't you tell us who you are, and come on up to the microphone, speak very clearly in the mic, and tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, my name is Libby Perry. I live at 263 Baker Drive in Mount Pleasant. And I do applaud all of the work that you're all doing, trying to make affordable housing and workforce housing. But one of the things I wanted to consider is, I run a small business with the National Park Service, we're a cooperating association, and I park on that lot. So I know that the parking doesn't outweigh the workforce housing, but would you please take into consideration for people that are parking on that lot, they're low-income too, but we have no other options. And so I figured it did not hurt to come here and say, could you please consider some of the smaller businesses that are parking on that lot? And if there's any help we can get to securing, I have three spaces in there. I've had them for five years. I've been on the waiting list for the aquarium garage for five years. And I've been bumped on the aquarium list because parking got moved. So I just figured it would not hurt to come here and just say, could you please consider some of the small businesses to try and help us find places?
Yes, ma'am. So you're going on record saying you're not, maybe you're not opposed.
You know, if you could find me another parking place, that would be great.
I can. I hear you, and I understand.
Yeah.
We appreciate you coming tonight.
That was what I really wanted to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And with any else, what else?
A slight response.
Yes, sir.
Some of our challenges of the design is to incorporate the parking, even though it's not necessarily required by the zoning. You still have to function as a building for people to live there. And so that really is one of our design challenges, and we've been working really hard to get as much of that in there. I understand other people that are parking there today. I don't know what to say. You know, Joe Riley did a great job of building a lot of parking garages in this town, and maybe somebody needs to help me in this area with some of that, that would go a long ways, because we've been trying to get it. They won't even put you on the waiting list for these other garages now. They're just so wrong. Because we will probably want to have more parking also. Anyway, we're interested in it the best we can.
Hopefully, some of them are riding a bike.
Riding a bicycle.
Walking and all that kind of stuff.
I'll leave a car, but thank you.
Does anyone else would like to speak on this application? Yes, in favor, whatever. Thank you. Mr. Horford, you gave a response. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's going to be, uh, into the public hearing on both items three and four. Commission members, and ask questions, comments, or motions?
I have one comment. I know we are here to talk about your rezoning, but I think what our question really is, is the question of, is there one that we can provide information, like the ombudsman's office or something? And I think you should probably talk to Mr. Morgan or one of the city staff and get a contact information from city officials so that you can, so that you can get your answer, your question answered about finding an alternative location.
I was going to make a motion, but-
I was just going to say that I'm wondering how that IHOP shuttle that they set up for the food and beverage is moving people from some upper to that areas.
I understood that the IHOP is not rented right now because the lot that the people parked in was purchased and they built on it. And they're trying to relocate another lot.
That's another problem I think we should work on.
I fear you. I think Ms. Harrison has a good suggestion, but maybe hopefully with this board or someone has a recommendation for you.
And they are going to bring back the IHOP. It's going to have a parking lot that's at Mount Pleasant Street between King and Meeting in conjunction with the new local entry rapid transit that will be coming through there. And it's my understanding that the IHOP lot will be there.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Lepus? I was just going to make a motion.
Go for it. Okay, Ms. Lepus, you go ahead.
For approval.
Ms. Lepus, this means for approval.
With two items.
Both items, number three and four.
77, 75 Washington and H. Charlotte.
And it's okay, Ms. Bryan Jenkins. Phil, I knew you had him. Ms. Bryan Jenkins is second on the motion. Great, thank you. Ms. Lepus makes a motion, second by Ms. Bryan Jenkins. You have a comment?
I'm just happy to hear that you took the commitment. Appreciate that commitment. You should also move that toward. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
They're in the long term. Thank you for your work, Mr. Horford. Thank you. So all in favor, signal five, raising the right hand if they would. All in favor, none opposed. That's a unanimous vote. And there's meat, favor, none opposed on items three and four. So thank you all.
Very much.
Number five.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but in order for us to see those spaces while they come up to the mic, is there any way that this mic can be moved to the other side of the room? We are trying to make sure that-
Are you with the city?
No, we're with Live Five News.
Okay.
So we're trying to make sure-
Ma'am, I hear you. We appreciate it. If the city can accommodate you, we'd love to, but I don't know logistically if we can do that tonight. I'm going to ask staff-
The thing we have is that we have a YouTube camera at the back of the room that we need to keep clear. Yeah.
Do you like move, can you move?
If we can move closer this way, so we're not blocking this door.
I don't have a problem with that.
Y'all have a problem with that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
This was my better side.
I make sure I'm looking.
But you can. Much better, much better. Two oh oh, two oh oh, three Herbert, two oh oh, three Herbert, three. Four mile, I guardian height, peninsula T M S number four six four oh two oh oh oh. Oh, four six, approximately point two six acres of grass rezoning from general business TV to business park BP. Mr. Morgan.
All right. So this is a further up in the neck area of the city and uh, so a question is on this. Business park designation to the core of Herbert Street and Harmon Street, uh, just to orient you all to the site. Wider view, uh, but this is um, in our conference of plan as industrial, so business park would be right in line with that. So it would be in compliance with the conference of plan. Um, and here's a description of what the conference of plan calls for from an industrial standpoint. Um, aerial image of the site they can cite at present. Um, this is a little bit further back. Uh, you can see it's looking from the, I believe, from the north east. Um, and you see some of the other industrial buildings and, and storage yards that are in the surrounding areas. It's definitely a very industrial type area. Here's a broader view. So this is um, our new public service yard that we are beginning planning on is over here off of Herbert. This is uh, Meeting Street over here, uh, moving to the North Charleston area in this location. Um, and you get to the site by coming down Herbert Street here. There is gonna be a new rail line. It's gonna be south of this that's gonna swing around. Uh, around Milford Street area and around the corner of our future public service yard, but it will not be on this property here, but that is part of the new um, real yard to me more Charles. And they're kind of marshaling yard where they put trains together. It's gonna extend all the way down to this area. But um, here, here's a street view image of the property. And uh, the differences between general business and business park, essentially, um, this allows for much more of uh, uh, use that's in keeping with the surrounding industrial uses. Um, and has other safeguards because of the business park criteria. Uh, our staff's recommending approval based on the conference of plan recommendations.
Mr. Morgan. Come here. Yes, ma'am.
Hi everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to have access to these in the heart of the town. You're a very talented client. Cameron Neal, who represents two thousand and three Herbert LLC. She actually operates um, Horgan and Harbinger Cafes. And is looking at this lot to develop a storage area for dry goods. And so in um, presenting the product, the project to the T R C, the city recommended that we consider resoning the property to business park. And so that's what we're asking you for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us, ma'am. Does anyone like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to this application? If not, that concludes the public aspect of this. Commission members, uh, questions, comments, or motion? Mr. Bailey moves for approval. Second, and Mr. Jacob. Thank you. Mr. Bailey makes a motion to approve. Ms. Jacob seconds. All in favor of raising your right hand, please? He's favorite, not opposed, so that passes. Next on the agenda, thank you, ma'am, for coming. Next item on the agenda is number six, property on Clements Ferry Road, Jack Promised, King Hawk and Nitsel, a portion of T M S number two six eight. Zero, 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 one, three, three, approximately one hundred five point eleven acres, one oh five point one one acre. Question is only from light industrial, ally, single family residential S R two. Mr. Morgan.
It's a property. Banning corridor of Clements Ferry Road, which is uh, this portion of Clements Ferry has been recently widened to um, four lanes. Um, and um, it's immediately adjacent to the Charleston Regional Business Park, uh, that's over here to the um, west. Uh, it's also adjacent to the former um, Macasa or now the Guilden um, apparel site. Um, to the rear of it is a um, Dominion uh, power lay down yard that's going to be constructed. Similar to one that we uh, you all hit a plug for in West Ashley around the um, River Hospital. We're gonna store electrical supplies, uh, poles, transformers, have approved quarters, that kind of thing there. And um, all of these parcels that remain that have not been developed have a good bit of wetland area on them. And so the original kind of concept that this whole area was gonna be larger warehouses and things like that is gonna be very difficult to execute because of where the wetlands are. And I have a image that will give you a better sense of some of the wetlands in the area. So I think we've had uh, property owners looking at other options here. And in this instance, they're interested in rezoning from the light industrial to the S R two, single family residential district. Um, there is other single family, of course, across the street here. Uh, and um, we have the um, uh, mixture of uses out in front of uh, that development that has a range of office, some light industrial. There is going to be a new affordable housing development right here on a parcel. I believe it's about ninety units that's gonna come in here off of Clements Ferry. Um, and there's some other developments in the surrounding area that I'll show you in some subsequent slides. Request that the owner, that the applicants have is uh, in line with the suburban recommendation in the new conference of plan for this area. Again, we have shifted our recommendations uh, out here because of the fact that the wetlands that are showing here in this kind of grayish, tealish color here, um, mean that it's very difficult to use this site for an industrial use in the future. But then we did increase the density on Clements Ferry Road because of the high elevation of Clements Ferry Road. And uh, the location of it relative to the rest of um, the Kingwood Peninsula. So um, we are seeing a little bit of a transition here from what had been used is purely kind of an industrial site. And of course, it's um, the suburban recommendation, which is a four to eight unit and acre recommendation, and then the areas that are wet or, you know, natural and wetland recommended to be built or anything like that. The aerial image of the site shows the site is almost exclusively wooded at present. Um, we do have some other images here to show some of the other things that are coming in the surrounding area. This is a little bit tighter view of it. You see the Guilden warehouse and some of the warehouses at Charleston Regional here. Uh, this is a plant that would provide for an access needed to sign from Clements Ferry Road. Again, the Guilden is here. Um, there are other developments coming here, uh, an apartment complex. I think I have an image for subsequent slides. Uh, there's also a new warehouse that's coming at Charleston Regional Parkway here and other potential commercial development here. And this is the site that would be the rest, single family residential one. This gives you a little bit better sense of where the wetlands are on the site. The access point again will be somewhere over here. Uh, there's an apartment complex that's going through the T R C review right now in this location. And there's also a warehouse building that's going through the T R C review here. And as I mentioned, there is an affordable housing development that will be across the street here. So um, the difference in the light industrial and the S R two is it's actually from a density standpoint, a down zoning. Um, it does go down to seven point three units an acre. It's six thousand square foot, million lot size. So it's, it's really kind of tough to get to seven point three units an acre, uh, once you factor in roads and green space and wetland and things like that. But um, our staff is recommending approval because it isn't in compliance with the conference of plan. It's a hundred and five acres and the applicant can tell you what percentage is uh, it will be built on. And like, the applicant should be able to tell you what percentage of wetlands there is.
Love to hear from you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Tom Richardson. I'm a landscape architect, my standard of security, representative of mine and ownership. Um, so as Christopher mentioned, um, this is a largely wooded and wetland site, um, three six timber years ago. Uh, so of the one hundred and five acres of the parcel, thirty four point eight six acres are public and the rest are. There are no critical area and there are seventy acres of wetlands.
Okay, so about thirty four point six. A bill, please. Right, thank you, sir.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. I didn't want to catch you off.
No, no worries, no worries. It shouldn't be. Hopefully short this week. Just a brief history to previously the track that Christopher alluded to, the Dominion Lay Down yard in L I that was previously. Um, and actually we had an approved concept plan for a residential neighborhood there. I believe it was a hundred and thirteen blocks. Um, that was Dominion really wanted uh, that site for access and lay down. So that was zoned back to L I just a couple of years ago. So the, the hope of the ownership group is effectively trading uses within this conglomeration of this tract. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you'll have.
Mr. Richardson, anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone in opposition to your application?
Mr. Chairman, you all did get a letter. I think it was, it was from the neighborhood.
You wanna read that as a record or briefly, I think, oh, it was my letter or?
This is all, uh, it's uh, yeah, the people, it's the central community. Uh, it's Chris Berner, the H O A president for Bearsford Hall, which is located directly across that. That is the neighborhood that's over here. It's the plan and development. Um, and it's um, that's kind of product gives her quickly on one of the largest impacted land adjacent property and assembly. They, they call it Bearsford Hall Assembly, was completely unaware of the proposed zoning was only informed two weeks ago via social media regarding proposed change. First and foremost, neither the owner of the property nor the rezoning applicant reached out prior to applying for this instant. Rezoning, consequently, this assembly is completely in the dark and has real concerns. Assembly's biggest concern is the transportation consequences associated with this residential rezoning. According to D O T, Clements Ferry is sort of feeling rated even after widening, you know, projected growth in the area. Um, purely based on transportation, current generation, S R two won't increase traffic and trucks compared to existing light industrial zoning. Uh, that being said, the assembly can't support a project that won't increase traffic on Clements Ferry Road. At a minimum, at a minimum, the assembly would request the planning staff and T R C, for a traffic study being performed for the entire Jack Promised Clements Ferry intersection. Currently, the south side of the intersection fails to peak times due to the continued heat on Clements Ferry, left of the turn, lack of a left turn lane from the south and trucks exiting the Macasa site, that's Guilden site. Additional trips generated from S R two rezoning will worsen this problem. The best solution is to issue the addition of a turn lane or leading left on the south side of the intersection. Assembly is not against the development of the property, but we're.
Thank you. And, and no one, uh, one of the speakers say with this application since I read in the record, it's first, would you like to say anything since we read that in the record?
Absolutely. Uh, the ownership group will be happy to coordinate with Bearsford Hall, Asia Way. Um, as, as is, I was actually here last night. My daughter was playing soccer right across the street. Um, that, that section of Clements Ferry is currently undergoing construction. I'm sure there's some frustration all the way around. There are a lot of orange barrels up and down. I drove through pretty much all of them. Um, so there is a master traffic study that is being performed for the entire track. We will be participating with that and also working D O T and the state for whatever recommendations are required in T R C process for us to meet.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Richardson. I hope your daughter won the soccer.
They did.
Um, that will close the public aspect of this. Commission members, questions, comments, or favors?
Questions. One, is here at all from the Jack Promised community?
And if I understand correctly, that there will not be access because of where wetlands are. There's not gonna be access on the Jack Promised road, correct?
That is correct.
So much wetland on this site. Question two, a lower density zoning.
Again, any density is derived just from the upland areas.
I understand that, but I mean, density will that up the area.
Right. So the plan recommends four to eight units acre in that care area like this. So the seven point three, I believe, is units acre of the S R two was in line with what the plan calls.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Other questions, comments, motions?
I have a question. So Richard, how many, how many lots do you, um, do you envision?
Uh, due to the, the uh, low amount of upland acres as well as the button considerations that all the um, stormwater drainage, manual things that we have to go through. It would not, I do not envision it being more than the one hundred and thirty eight that were on the previous Macasa track above. We're still studying that. But again, this, when, and just, um, and I know you all know this, but just for the record, when the conference of plan is done and land uses assigned for recommendation, there is a master traffic analysis done. That helps inform what is to be compliant with that. This will follow S R one option, uh, which you mentioned, Ms. Jacob. That does have a lot of things that you can do in the conservation um, element if you choose to accept it. And you can actually achieve a density higher than here because the minimum lot standards are much, much lower. We felt that it was more appropriate to go with the S R two route, uh, this, and this will be single family detached now. So that would be the compliance.
Actually, Donna, just for the record, I mean, it works out to be like two hundred and eighty six. If you look at the Highlands with the per unit. And if it's S R one, it works out to be a hundred and thirty six. If we were to downzone it to single family residential.
Those developer doing. How many you go get on that? She's figured that.
So it is basically single family. That's why I was asking that. Because why don't you put the roads, you put the stormwater, you put everything else in there, the wetlands here. You're pretty much at S R one zone.
Yeah, I don't think we would have that, that S R two.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, motions, my commission members?
Chairman, I'll, I'll do a refer. I know this um, letter from Bearsford Hall that they acknowledge that they're not opposed to development of the property. They're just concerned about traffic. And I think there's probably not a neighborhood in Charleston that that concern doesn't exist in some way, shape, or form. And so um, I, I hope that developer will be engaged with Bearsford Hall and other neighborhoods along um, that rapidly growing part of town. So I'm moved for approval.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, questions, comments, or second of motion?
I'll second.
Great. Mr. LaSane, second. So motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. LaSane. All in favor, signal five by raising your right hand? I'm beating favor, not opposed, so that passes.
Never say I again.
We can do that.
Oh, Jesus.
Well, Mr. Richardson, thank you for being with us. Next item on the agenda is, uh, well, the subdivision property conversion is deferred. So the next item, the subdivision, uh, number one, River Road and Pal Brown Road, Wooddale, John's Island. It's number three one six, oh, 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 three four. Three, four, those three six, oh, three seven, oh, three eight, oh, three nine, oh, four, oh, oh, one, oh, four two, oh, four three, oh, four, oh, four, oh, five. And oh, five, seven, approximately four hundred and sixty nine one acres. Request approval of subdivision concept plan for four hundred and thirty single family residential lots. Um, Wooddale plans development. That is smart?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Um, we wanted to make sure you were paying attention to all those numbers. Okay. Um, well, uh, this, uh, the applicant is requesting submission concept plan approval for approximately, like you said, four hundred and sixty nine acres on between River Road and Pal Brown Road. Or John's Island. Project consists on the creation of new rights away to certain four hundred and thirty parcels for single family detached residential units as well as open space. Um, the proposed rights aways are typical for residential sub streets in the city of Charleston. And the new parcels conform to the subdivision requirements from the parcels under the Wooddale plan in the development. As you can see, there are wetlands on the uh, parcels, several parcels, and wetlands are proposed to be impacted in the subdivision concept plan. It is, um, you can see the green is all the wetlands in there, but uh, uh, the developer is trying to stay out of the wetlands as much as they can. The property is on under the Wooddale plan in the development. Uh, it was approved by city council in May of twenty thirteen. The proposed concept plan meets the requirements of the document, including the maximum density of one full unit per acre. Surrounding parcels are um, contain single family residential uses as well as several parcels zoning conservation. So they're looking, uh, seeking concept plan approval. And um, as we have noted in the past, approval of the concept plan does not guarantee final subdivision plan approval. It allows the developer to move to the next step, which would be moving to T R C, looking for preliminary plot uh, approval as well as road construction plan approval. And it will have to go through the uh, review on their review of all the departments of uh, T R C, Stormwater, Engineering, G I S, Fire, Traffic and Transportation. And it will have to go through the, uh, review on their review of all the departments of, uh, TRC, Stormwater Engineering, GIS, Fire, Traffic and Transportation, et cetera. So based on the approval by all the TRC members, staff recommendation is for.
Thank you. Yes, yeah.
Hi, Chris McGoldy with Thomas and I, um, we appreciate those considerations tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to the application? That being said, this public aspect of, uh, number one on subdivisions closed. Mission members, questions, comments, motions?
I'm the for approval.
Mr. Lepus is moved for approval.
And I was seconded and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna add a little bit more to the record just because. When I was through the T R C. Five T R C reviews, just to get this to concept. There are 40 pages of stormwater review just to get concept approved. And they have a goal of 50% open space. There were good eight or 10 transportation comments that, that they had. Want to put it on the record because people are always concerned that these things are not liberation to just to get us for concept. And I just.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. So, and also, so you know, Ms. Jacobs, you'll be watching as well. So we appreciate that. So there's a motion by Miss Lepus.
Mr. Man, another comment.
Yes, sir.
In addition to Ms. Jacobs', uh, comment, I just wanted to state for the record that this is a property that's been subject to, uh, a lot of controversy over the years. It was outside of the urban growth boundary. The city tried to downzone it. It was subject to a lawsuit and, and the entitlements that are on the property now were, uh, basically a part of a settlement, uh, with the property in it. So.
I was getting ready to say, this has been a long process.
I figured that it was a process that people worked on because there's no one here to speak on it. So I figured it went. It's been a long and winding road. Second, so there's.
This being outside the urban growth boundary, right next to where the lines were drawn was a very controversial, um, deal. And we've been looking at this for a long time. And, um, so this is a settlement. This is a 50%, one lot per acre. I mean, you really can't get much better than that.
Thank you. So there's most of my Miss Lepus, second my Miss Jacobs, all those in favor, signify by saying all right. Uh, that is eight in favor and a four. Next item on the general is second review committee, T R C appeal. Number one, Kane slash road. At least like that is just, there's a metro line, so I need to expect something. Road, Kane slash subdivision, John's Island, TMS number three, four, five, four, zero, seven.
You're not gonna repeat all these, are you?
I'm gonna do it. Uh, three, five, three, four, five, zero, 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 seven, and oh, two, three approximately. Thirty point two acres request appeal of the staff's determination to deny a conservation development. Pre-application for zoning code section six four next to the next one. Barclay was on a single family residential, it's own, that's what I want. Is, uh, Mr. Morgan or Miss Hart? Or.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Schultz. But he's gonna present.
No, no, Mr. Schultz is always good to have you with us. You're always working. So we appreciate you.
Once every five years, we get to see Mr. Schultz.
He's usually out in the field working, that's for sure.
Well, thank you. Uh, and I think a couple new faces on welcome aboard. Um, also, we have to recognize Kenzie Holmes. I think he'll be speaking maybe tonight.
Is Ron with us tonight? Just Kenzie.
Very good. He's with Stormwater. I'll explain the whole process to you. Did you finish your homework? You were supposed to read this ordinance before, uh, tonight. Um, we're kind of in uncharted waters here, uh, almost to the date, uh, April 13th, 2021, city council ratified this ordinance and you all took part in getting it to city council and having that great go, go down. Uh, previously we had the cluster ordinance, had some issues. Um, so we rethought how we should really address, uh, an applicant process on how to get a quality conservation development on the ground. So with that said, um, we're dealing with a 30 acre track. It's, uh, between Kane slash road and I'm gonna go old school. I got my old, uh, winner here. So, uh, 30 acres roughly as stated, Kane slash to the north, Hardwick to the south. Hardwick is an unimproved road. It's basically a dirt community road today. On, on, you know, very little improvements on it. A lot of heirs property back in that area. And of course Kane slash is seeing tremendous pressure with development and what have you. So zoned SR1. So the ordinance allows, I'll use the word by right. If they get approval and a determination by the city, that determination is critical here to do a cluster development. All right. So, um, next slide, please. You can see that it's a heavily wooded track. Note that this coloration's here. Of the 30 acres, roughly 15 acres is in wetland delineation. Um, so you have a pocket of high ground on Kane, uh, Kane slash does wrap around here. You can see a couple islands worth of high ground. And then you gotta talk to the high ground off of Hardwick. Next slide. So this is a slide that we put together to kind of give you a reminder of what, why we're here. Um, the process, as I stated, is a lot different. And number one, I also have to kind of correct this statement here. It has not even gotten to the technical review committee. The way we design this ordinance is that there's a, uh, a group of staff members from planning, zoning and stormwater management. And we get together and we review the applicant's submitted information. So obviously this is where we're at today. We had the pre-application site review. And then from there we go into a diagram review. And then out of that, the applicant is hopeful to get a positive determination from the city. That is worthy of a conservation development that would then move on to the technical review committee to, uh, start the concept plan, uh, approval process. Next slide. Actually back up, sorry, uh, on it. If they don't get a affirmative determination, then we built into the ordinance this section here, which allows the applicant to appeal staff's decision. Again, it's staff. And you can see here, the planning commission must act on repeal within 60 days and the action of the planning commission is final. So they made, uh, that appeal, uh, application. So that's why we're here tonight. Next slide, please. Uh, that's a good question. Uh, we calculated it. Are we at like 45 days, I think today? Oh, I think we're around 45 days. So the purpose, and this is the very important part of the, uh, ordinance, the intent. I want you to focus on B, C, D, and F. Accommodate and preserve features of historical, cultural, archaeological and environmental significance. C, conserve existing intact, undisturbed forests, understory grassland soils and other wetland ecosystems. Provide common open space of high quality with multiple access points. And then F, they're, they're all very important, but these are the four that we decided that the intent wasn't met and we submitted the letter back to the applicant to, uh, declare that they weren't. They did not receive a positive determination. F, reduce, reduce infrastructure costs by mimicking pre-development site hydrology into the stormwater management design for the development. So next slide, please. So this is the letter. Um, I want to get into the process in just a minute, a little bit more here with a timeline. But the letter again states the, the reasons why we did not give it a positive determination. Next slide. Okay. All right. So the order events happen this way. As I stated, the ordinance is basically hot off the press as of April last year. Um, this site actually was trying to get a, a cluster development, but we put a sunset date on the cluster. And I kind of got caught up in that while we, uh, reviewed the ordinance and drafted a new one. It obviously went through the process to get it ratified. So September 13th, we received the conservation development application. And it was deemed then incomplete. It was new to all of us. So we had some issues to work through. November 1, they received, uh, again, the city received the CD application. It was deemed complete. So on November 9th, we had a pre-application meeting as stated in the ordinance. And this is when we give the applicant the opportunity to really disclose to the city staff all the physical attributes of the, of the property. And so they're doing some early field work. They're understanding topography. They're understanding tree cover. They're understanding wetlands. Historical features, manmade features, whatever it may be. And they're supposed to feed that to the city. Again, we're trying to figure out whether this, uh, conservation development is worthy of being determined to move on. And how they're going to potentially set aside those, uh, physical attributes. So that happened on, uh, November 9th. November 29th, we received the diagram exhibit. Again, there's no, the purpose of this process is not to see a layout of roads or lots. The purpose is to figure out whether the city will determine that it's worthy of moving on because you're setting aside the really good, high quality attributes of the site to be conserved. The other, you know, and that leads into the other residual lands that will eventually be developed with lots of streets. So that occurred, um, December 13th, we had the diagram. The staff, the staff indicated that it was not ready to receive an affirmative, uh, determination. We listed the reasons in an email. They went back, applicants went back. Uh, out of that meeting, it was decided that, um, staff would like to get on site. It, it's really important to touch the, the land, to touch the trees, to understand the, the site. And myself and Ron Buchi, uh, had the opportunity to meet with the applicants and you learn so much more when you're on site. Uh, we can see the standing water. We can see the running water. We can see manmade ditch lines. We can see how trees are lined up on s- certain features and what have you. So we learned a whole lot there. Uh, so we did that field visit. So we fed them some information, just words on out in the field and then also some, an email went out with some, uh, ideas and thoughts about what they should be looking at more closely. Uh, February 8th, we received the diagram again. And then March 1, we had the diagram meeting with the applicant and staff delivers the negative determination. And, uh, verbally, and then the letter, as you saw, went out, um, it was dated March 1st, but it was sent March 2nd. And that leads us to today. So next slide, please. I'll come back to this slide. This was a slide or an image of, we're not supposed to be looking at lots or streets in this process, but uh, they hired a consultant and they presented this the day of the second diagram, uh, meeting. And we talked about it roughly during the course of the discussion, but, um, I'll come back to that in a minute. Next slide, please. So this is the, uh, the exhibits that staff received, again, made up of planning, zoning and stormwater. And this is basically just showing how they're going to treat stormwater. They have an upland basin routed through stormwater detention to the discharge point, just a rough diagram to kind of explain how they're looking at stormwater. Next slide. Again, this is an aerial, uh, you can see it's a little higher image. You can see the wetland. You can almost pick it out, the shape of it, the property lines, the listing and, um, adjacent properties. Note Hardwick is right here. It's basically under dirt road here. Next slide. So they have done a lot of work. They've got topo, uh, they've picked up conservation trees, which are basically grand trees. Um, either the road side ditch here. This is an important feature here. I'll just point out here. Obviously the wetland is an important feature. They have a little borrow pit down at here. That's an important feature. And then of course trees. Slide, please. This slide starts to show how they're going to, uh, manage, uh, stormwater, how they think there's a, a buffer around the wetland. They're thinking maybe a pond here. They're thinking of a pond on the lower end. Um, but you know, how that interacts with the existing wetlands and trees. Again, this is an important feature. This, this is a ditch, a manmade ditch that drains Kane slash. Uh, discharges basically into the wetlands. Next slide, please. So this, if you read your, your coloration here, they have, um, you know, different, uh, areas of parkland. Uh, open space, again, how, uh, the wetland or the stormwater system would operate. Slide. And that leads us to, uh, their appeal because they did not receive a affirmative determination to move on. And we asked that they, again, this was all new to us. We didn't have an appeal form and what have you, but we kind of made it up as we went. Um, they did pay a fee to get here. Um, and basically filled out a subdivision application for, uh, but we asked for them to produce a narrative as to what they feel they're, the grounds of their appeal are. So at this point, turn it over to the applicant.
Okay. Before we do that, I was asked so many questions, Mr. Lepus.
Yes, um, Schultz, you kind of ran by the reasons that you sent the letter about.
Yes.
That, that kind of went by too fast. We weren't able to see.
Yeah, let's back up. That's a very good point. Very good point. So I said that, uh, in the ordinance C, uh, B, C, D, and F. So under one, uh, we really have an issue with the proposed wetland crossing. We just don't feel, and once you're on site, it's a, it's, it's a really telling story. And you have 30 acres, 15 away. You can write it. The, the issue with the wetland crossing is that we feel it will have a severe impact on the wetland system itself. But how it functions today, I'll defer to Kenzie to get a little more into detail with that if necessary. But the city, um, has to look upstream. We have to look downstream. And they have a wetland permit, a impact permit in place. Uh, we have to meet certain road, centerline road elevations. And if you could go back to the, well, let's, let me go through these first. So the wetland, we feel that it just doesn't meet the intent to impact that wetland. Um, and it, you know, disturb the natural flow of water over the land today. Um, the second one is there, there's no water and sewer on Hardwick. So they have to bring water and sewer from Kane slash and go through the wetland to get over to that other pond, if you will. So we, you know, we're extending, uh, uh, infrastructure when maybe that land can be just set aside. Uh, number two, the existing, uh, topographic features. Uh, I noted that one ditch line that comes off of Kane slash. It's a manmade. It's important to, uh, the function and drainage of Kane slash. And we feel that it needs to be enhanced or even celebrated a little more in their bubble diagram. Number two, or number three is, um, there's a population of trees out there. Um, we just didn't see a real effort to put a lot of those trees or give those trees greater open space around, uh, those trees. And, um, really celebrate that natural feature. Does that kind of answer your question? So let's go back to that diagram. I don't want to kill any more, much more time. Give the applicant there. We could go back just to the, that one bubble. Keep going back. So. One more. So here, um, you know, they were showing this is, you know, just, uh, realizing it exists, but maybe not celebrating it enough. Actually, the colored diagram, I'm sorry, one more. Here's where they show the land uses. So this would all be residential with just a little strip maybe. And that, uh, we discovered or talked about in the field that because it takes public water off of, uh, Kane slash, that most likely there'd have to be a pretty significant drainage, he's been added to that ditch line. And, uh, and then this is, you know, this is, this is really note how close it is to the adjoining property line. The wetland extends way over that way. And of course the wetlands extend to the south. And we just feel that this environment metal impact doesn't meet the intent of.
What is that? What is that? What is that supposed to be?
This would be a road crossing.
That's a road cross.
That would be a road crossing. They have that, uh, impact permit in hand. Um, but we just feel that it's, it's just detrimental to the, the flow and functionality of the wetland. And then trees, you can see trees, uh, but they're showing that this is, you know, residential. And maybe there needs to be an effort to put, um, pink open space in some of, around these trees. These trees. These trees are actually lined up on a small, what we think is maybe an old agricultural ditch. And that would be, that would speak to the cultural significance of the site, that maybe they have to have a little ribbon of. You know, that's just how we viewed it, looked at it. Yes, ma'am. I want to defer to Mr. Kinsey.
Was explained to you.
So. We, we need more data, I believe, and Kinsey can elaborate on this, but. You wouldn't want to build a subdivision where this, this road was underwater during a storm event, so it's going to have to. Most likely introduce fill. So. There's a lot of ways to deal with that, but it bet of essentially it becomes a dam. If you will, they can put culverts under it, we don't know how many would be necessary, and if they could achieve. The true functionality of flow of water through that wetland system, so we feel it's just, it doesn't meet the intent. So most likely, because they have to get sewer from point A to point B, because there's none on Ardwick, so that would be your corridor.
So there's no other sewer connection on the other side.
Actually, I before and I failed to, I printed it out and I failed to bring it, but I did do the CWS. GIS layer that we have. It appears that the neighboring property here, Twin Lakes, had to extend their sewer from. What we now call Oakfield. And I'm not sure about what, I'll let the applicant. Discuss that.
One question, when you were talking about the ditch. You use the term celebrate, and so I guess I just need some more clarity about what you mean by.
Word, it's a fluffy word, what we're, what we would envision. Is that they take that, they enhance it. Use it for to convey water, but maybe put it into more of an open space scenario, put a trail along it. And here they're just showing that it's residential, bound by residential.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Wetland crossing does not happen in the general area that is shown on that diagram. Can you still, is there another way for them to access and develop the green section on the right hand side?
So you're, you're asking great questions, and that's where we were trying to guide the applicant. Because it's a community road, if you will, there is a. A right away. It's not a full fifty foot right away on portions of Ardwick. The county has a program where they're going into these community roads and improving them. We learned that the county, Charleston County, had a proposed subdivision. There's a fairly large tract of land down in there, a family wanted to subdivide it. But they have a policy that if you do that, you have to provide a full fifty foot right away to that subdivision. So the applicant repeatedly stated, and we understand that. There's no water, there's no sewer, it's unimproved, it may relate to marketing, we, you know, we can think about a lot of different ideas, how they're thinking, but. So I want to point out a couple of things, I want to get my little sticky here. Yes. Earlier, you spoke about maximum density, so the ordinance is written that you take the high ground. And you calculate what it would be under SR one, which requires nine thousand square foot lots, so fifteen acres roughly. Equates under four point eight acres to the acre, equates to seventy two units. You would never, ever, ever achieve that because the high ground, you, you know, you're counting these islands. You know, people come in with these ideas that, oh, we'll, we'll get seventy two units, you got to subtract out your, your stormwater, there's no way, trees. So, you know. I want to go back. Yeah, I just, I just want to point out one thing, if we could go to the diagram that they showed with the roads and the lots. I think it was, yes, okay. Let me just touch on this a bit, note this name, Randall Iron. The applicant heard about our cluster ordinance, they heard about the conservation ordinance and conversations over the phone. We recognized a book that Randall Iron wrote. He's, he's renowned throughout the landscape art, landscape architecture. Community as a conservation landscape architect or land planner. So the applicant hired Randall and Randall came up with a plan, which we saw in our second diagram meeting. He attended in Zoom. Note how he takes the trees and gives the trees open space. And this plan comes up with. Forty two lots. Keep in mind that this ordinance is very flexible. The applicant has so much flexibility, there's no minimum lot size, no frontage requirements, you can have lots that front on a ten foot easement. Very flexible to put aside the good stuff. Get the community back the good stuff. Forty two lots. We did, we asked Jim Hethill in our planning, he, he has the ability to drop this into a scaled document. Of the twenty two lots shown here. He came up with a calculation of those. Square footages of those lots. So we have an ordinance, is it SR two, Christopher, that four thousand square foot lots?
Six thousand.
Six thousand, which one's four thousand square foot lots? SR four? Somewhere around there, I'm just, what, what we, what we did, just to. Because there's so much flexibility, twenty two lots here. We took the lot area shown, Jim was able to calculate that. The total area, if you divide it by four thousand square foot lot, of course, you have to think about your product that you're going to put on the locks, the size of the home, no required setbacks. You could get thirty one lots, just in the yellow area that Randall Iron. Drew out and not even think about this, but. That was just a quick study that we did.
I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah, no, I think we got to move on. Christopher said ten minutes and I'm way over.
It's alright, we appreciate your information, you're very thorough and answered questions. Back already given us recommendations, so we heard that, so is the applicant here? Yes, sir. You've been very patient, thank you, sir.
You know, Trey, the civil engineering firm that prepared the application for the conservation. I believe the city staff takes issue with the road crossing between the two areas, that seems to be. The issue, proposed development received the US Army Corps. US Army Corps of Engineers nationwide permit across the wetlands. One of the other points that Eric made, that the intent of the conservation development is, is multiple access points. How do we have multiple access points between on the subdivision is a road crossing between our way cane slash. Also, in the ordinance, it states, all conservation developments shall comply with the stormwater regulations. In effect at the time of complete application for a development plan. Nothing in this part amends, modifies, or repeals the stormwater regulation. Regulations, our intent is to meet those regulations, and we hope to with our new conservation development plan.
My name is Bill Burns, I'm the owner of the property, and hey, it has been a saga, this is the. Never thought we'd be here. Back in October thirteenth of twenty twenty, we went to contract, happened to be the same day that sunset the cluster. Waited seven months till the conservation ordinance came out, when we looked at it, we said, this is wonderful, this could be the poster child for the city of Charleston. Because we thought we hit all the. Thought we hit all the boxes, as a matter of fact, Christopher's terrific presentation on the conservation ordinance. Used this here as a demonstration of what a site plan would look like. We actually thought it might have been something he made from old site plans that we had. Turns out, this is, this came from Randall's book, so. We ended up hiring Randall to do this, and. Were thinking that we hit. The numbers and went well beyond, there's about sixty three percent open space instead of fifty percent. Working with forty two lots, originally, we, we got forty seven taps in twenty twenty. We reduced it by five, down to forty two, and that's a credit to Brent and John True, the developers. Because it will make a better development, it'll be larger lots, as Eric pointed out. Not thirty one, it's like a little over twenty on the front part and twenty on the back. In terms of the trees. Eric mentioned that, these green spaces here. Something that Randall came up with, where. Twenty nine majestic of grand trees that are going to be on their own private parks. Forever. They're not going to be part of a home site. That means that a homeowner can never touch them, cut them down. Modify them. And of course, there's still going to be trees on the lots where you can see the houses. That's an innovation that would make sense for any conservation ordinance at any time. Where you set aside land. That grand trees are on to save them, takes them out of circulation, so to speak. The other things. View from the various lots, tons of open space. Roads, culvert sacks, we've got. Trees there, some of the flag lots make it easier. Twenty five percent recreational, these are high. There is, they come to a little over three and a half acres, they can be connected by board marks. One place we're under contract with Crescent that store. Wetlands, of course, come to ours, and they were going to combine the two. Which would have made for the concept of interconnected open spaces. One of the. Sign ideas that Randall has. That would have made open space between. Twin Lakes and River Road. Which is. Something that people would perform in the future. Terms of rural nature of cane slash. The culvert cane slash. And the density is a lot less than what could be allowed. Our ideas makes for better development, it's as simple as that.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you're welcome.
Hi, my name is Brett Case, I'm the developer of the project. And been along with this for a long time.
I am. Good speaking, make fun, no more, I appreciate, thank you. Thank you, that's alright.
So, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm from Charleston, you know, I'm a close developer, I've been the staff for a very long time. And understand what the city is trying to accomplish with this and why they went from a cluster to a conservation. District, and we're the first ones that have come through this process. And I feel it's important to point out some of the, some of the issues that we had with the way this process had worked, and more of. Eight, I want to make sure that this is the intent, because a lot of what we've been discussing has to do with intent. And as a developer, when you're hearing. When, when you're hearing objection, or you're trying to make a plan, you're trying to, to spend thousands of dollars with engineers and designers and consultants. And we're trying to put a plan that we think meets what the intent of the city is trying to do. But when it comes back and says, we don't feel. That this is right. If you, if you know, many times during this presentation, we kept hearing, we don't feel that this is correct, it doesn't feel like this is the right kind of development. And from our perspective, that's very difficult for us to work with. Right, I mean, we're used to very detailed zoning ordinances that say, this is what. You have to buy by, and if you buy by these things, and you can move forward, if you don't buy by these things, then we can have a conversation about it, but. It's difficult to go through this process of reiteration and reiteration and come back and say, well, we don't feel like. Your wetland crossing that you have a national permit for. Who are hired engineers to tell us that there's not going to be an impact on the wetlands. And we spent thousands of dollars and gone through many months. For the Army Corps of Engineers who have the jurisdiction to determine and protect these wetlands to come back and tell us, well, we don't feel like that permit is accurate, that. They are meeting what our intent of what we feel like is supposed to be for us. So, you know, that to us is difficult, and I'm concerned that. Because we're the first ones going through, that staff has not been given the guidance that they need. To prevent every applicant that gets denied to come through here. Right, and, and then come back to you with an appeal, because they haven't been given accurate guidelines of what they need to do to make a decision. You know, the word feel needs to be taken out of this process. And it needs to be handed to, if you meet these particular guidelines, it works, right? Because our perspective and the perspective, and Eric was so kind during this process to say, hey, when we wrote this ordinance. You know, we used an example of. Of this book, please go get this book and learn that and come back to us, and you'll understand the intent of what we're trying to, which is exactly what we did. And it came back to, when we got Randall on the phone, that these objections. That we had, the three objections that, that denied us the zoning. Two of the three. They seem to be okay with it, we can overcome this based on a new design, Randall's ideas, again. Is following with the intent, however, the fact that you've created a wetland crossing. Which in our crossing, and here, what Trey hasn't gone, is our, our permit allows for two culverts. To allow continue to flow through, of water to flow through for the bridge, we put five. Right, just to, just to be sure, but the only way to activate this is that we're able to connect it because. Behind us on our week, we have a rural community that wasn't provided road, wasn't provided sewer, wasn't provided water. By coming in and providing sewer here and getting a connection here, in the future, we will be able to, and when we met with CP, CPW or Charleston Water Systems. They said, hey, when you bring this in, design it such a way that we might be able to connect it the other way, tap it to the other, the other people on that route, so. You know, we felt like we're doing, checking so many good intentions for this development. To meet the intent that the city is trying to do, to deny us just because we have a, a wetland crossing of which we have a national permit. And have gone above and beyond that national permit in order to accommodate any kind of stormwater issues. Even with a culvert that is to be celebrated, which is a manmade drainage ditch from the city, which is contributing to the size of the wetlands. So, you know, there's, there's so many things here and so many things at play, I think, in trying to. Make this a perfect development under the new conservation district. You know, I think we're, we're getting caught in the details and we're not looking at the forest and the trees. And so, you know, I want to make sure that. That the staff has the ability that. The next developer that comes in here and says, well, we're going to touch wetlands. That you're not creating a precedent that says, well, you denied this because you had a wetland cross. I mean, there's no, there's no guidance for us to say, well, how long of a wetland crossing do we need to have, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. Right, just that you have a wetland crossing, therefore you have touched the wetlands. When you read this ordinance, and you talk about language of conserve existing, conserve existing intact, undisturbed forests. Which every development. Understory grassland soils and upland ecosystems. Well, what property that is, that is forest, that becomes not forest, we're not doing that yet? Decreased stormwater runoff, non-point source pollution by reducing the amount of impervious surface in the development incorporating. Again, how, how are we going to do any development that is not going to have an effect on this? Reduce infrastructure costs by mimicking predevelopment site hydrology into stormwater management design for development. Where, where are we going to turn? Land into, not into, into a commercial or residential, any kind of use that is, that is not a forest or a park? That we're not going to impact this. So, you know, I, I, I feel for the staff, they're in a difficult position trying to interpret this. I feel for the consultants that are in the middle of, of developers and city and staff. And I feel for, for you and city council that have to try to interpret this. And I think that we need to look, if we're going to keep it vague, I think it's important, you who have been appointed. To make these decisions of what feels like it's supposed to intent is going to be. I think it's important that we do try to keep the big picture here and not create a precedent. That is going to constantly come back, because there's a lot of properties that have islands. And that's what this is for, and we met with Chris Morgan many times, he felt that this is a perfect example of how this can work, because we do have islands that can be activated. He felt that this is a perfect example of how this can work, because we do have islands that can be activated, and some that aren't. These islands here, we're keeping, right? We're creating walkways and pathways and amenities for the, for the, for the residents that are in there. You know, we're creating common open space, we're meeting all these checkmarks that the book that was given us as a guideline meets. And, and to deny it just because we have somebody that disagrees with the federal government on a wetland crossing, that, that does, just doesn't make sense to us. And so, we're asking you all to reconsider the intent of this ordinance, and how it is worded, and how you're going to give guidance to the city on interpreting on what they feel. It's just not fair to Eric to, to be alone in making that decision on his emotional feeling about the development or should it be easement or not. I really think it, it needs to fall back on y'all, and that was an effort to help. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Yes, sir, you come forward and identify yourself, appreciate.
I'm John's lawyer, with your attorney passport. If you drive along Maybank Highway, you'll notice a lot of development. If you don't notice, just north of it and just south of it, a lot of wetlands. And the reason Maybank Highway is there is because it's a highland. And there's a lot of developments, especially on the north side of Maybank, that cross over those wetlands. They're not conservation developments. So, the question here isn't, you know, none of those stop, none of the, you didn't see any of those before you. The reason you didn't see any of those before you, because they did try and vote conservation development ordinance. They, they got the Corps of Engineer permits, they did everything they needed to do, they didn't go for a conservation development ordinance. So, the question isn't Corps of Engineers, the question isn't permits, the question isn't any of that. It's, does this comply with the conservation development ordinance? And as the staff says, I believe it doesn't, because as Eric said, I think he said it really well, you save the good stuff. I think that's like the best definition of a conservation development you could ever find. And yes, I have read his book, Randall's book, and he basically says that you, first thing what you do is you set aside all the good stuff, and then you build around it. And actually, believe it or not, on John's Island, wetlands are good stuff, all right? And so, you set aside the good stuff, and you build around them. And I think I agree with staff that they're not doing that in this particular case. I think there's a lot of stuff they can go and not have a conservation subdivision tomorrow if they want to, and you wouldn't even see it. But if they want to use a conservation subdivision, they need to go along with staff and save the good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to the application?
You know, give the applicant a task respond to, if they'd like to, you don't have to.
Oh, sure, no, I, I, I'm open for debate on what the good stuff is, you know.
If you speak to the microphone, just so we get you on record, thank you.
Yeah, sure, no, we're preserving the wetlands. So, if the wetland is considered good stuff, I think not only we're presenting it, if we go by what we are by rights, right? If we don't go for the conservation development, and we go by what is rightfully zoned, yes, we can pack thirty-one units in the front end of that, and we can wait till the opportunity is developed, the second half, and our week is developed, and we can pack a bunch of homes in there as well at high density. We can do that, not protect the trees. The existing zoning ordinance is more harmful to what the intent is, which is why we're going for the conservation development, right? We, we, by rights, we can come in and do a whole lot more worse. But by going for the conservation development, we are trying to protect what we feel is the good stuff.
And if the wetland is the good stuff, we're still protecting the wetlands. And the US government says we're still going to protect the wetlands by this decision.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That's going to close the public aspect of this.
I think the city needs to have a rule of thought, just to make a couple things clear.
Just make a presentation on what, if you do that.
I need to let the applicant address that as well.
I think there's, I think there's some clarity needed. The appeal is not to this plan. This plan was presented the day of our second diagram meeting, right? Okay, so kind of erase this, because if Anna will go back to the diagram that was submitted, the colored land use, so the, the, the process is that we hear all about the site analysis, then they come back with a diagram that sets up the land use. That's this, land use, so residential, open space, open space, open space, residential. And based on this discussion at staff level, leading up to the meeting, we determined that this was not worthy of a positive determination. It was in the meeting that they presented Randall's plan. We're not supposed to be seeing lots and roofs, we're just seeing how they're setting away the good stuff. So, I want, I want to make that clear. Randall's plan is not what they've appealed, or we determined not to be worthy of going. This land use plan.
Thank you, sir. Again, just in the act of fairness, since it was another response, would you like to say anything else? Final word before we close the public area?
No, final word is, listen, we, we think that in this site plan, Eric, if you'd be so kind to let me use your pointer. Thank you. I'll, I'll come over to this one, okay? So, in this plan, you know, again, we're, you see that this is lightly shaded. You see that the wetlands is underneath, meaning that we're preserving the wetlands, even though we have a crossing that is going to cross it. You will see that there is a man-made ditch here that has been unkept for many, many years. So, you know, how we handle that, I think, is determined in our site plan. That, that's what's going to affect if this is celebrated or not. So, if we're looking at this, determining, saying, "Okay, well, if I'm going to develop this highland and this highland, I want interconnectivity between the neighborhood, does that constitute being able to do a conservation development?" So, so that, that's what I think still preserves it all. And justifies even more to our point, that because of the unique uniqueness of way we have the islands used in the existing conditions, that the only practical way would be to go about the conservation development.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, that's going to close the public aspect of this, I'm just, I'm sorry.
And again, Eric. With all due respect, we just can't go back and forth. I just want to remind the, the commission, if you have questions technically.
We will, and I will say that, but believe it or not, he's here to answer.
The commission members on bashful, if they have questions, they will ask you, so.
I do have one question.
Okay, Ms. Harrison, you go ahead.
So, and I guess I don't know, I, I want to direct my question to the applicant. The plan, that is the one that was delivered on March the first, right? How significantly different is it from the plan that was actually submitted to TRC?
We haven't actually visited TRC.
I mean, well, to, to the pre-application. Yes, that process, yes.
So, the plan you see here was the plan that Eric and staff saw at city staff. The colorations that we just designated upland areas, wetland areas, detention areas. So, we just designated specific areas, but we didn't lay out any lots, roads, that Eric's direction. So, what we presented to them at the second meeting was, if we were to lay out lots, and we were to lay out the road, this is how we presented this.
Thank you, and again, as I said, just to trade it clear, the public aspect is closed. Commission members, questions, comments? I think Ms. Lempus, this is fairly unique, I don't think you've been on here for a few years and seen things like that, but this is new first on the appeals, sir.
Well, I mean, I have several issues with everything going on. And Eric, I look to you from a legal standpoint, because we, we took away our cluster ordinance. It was not, it was a good ordinance, it was something that worked. It did not work in one neighborhood. It got criticized incredibly in the one neighborhood, and it got, and it screwed up in the one neighborhood. And then we locked, then we all of a sudden shut down our cluster ordinance. The cluster ordinance has worked in many different areas. It has provided alleys of trees, it has, it has clustered together smaller lots. The perfect example is the one outside of Ashley Harbor, there was going to be a cluster zoning, but there was a lot of things that happened, we don't need to get into that. But, but the issue is, we were trying to, and, and I think the, the conservation development plan is a good one. I think the cluster ordinance is a good one. I think that we shouldn't have done away with our cluster ordinance. It was, it, it had so many wonderful merits to it. And, and I think putting terms in like "feel" and, and, you know, encourage depositors. I think all that is what we want to see. This is our city, and we want to protect as much as we can. But putting adjectives in there like that, and descriptive terms is subject to the interpreter, and who is actually looking this over, and I think that is very unfair for an applicant. They don't know what to put forth, and I think that this ordinance is not a good ordinance. And I think whether they should be allowed or not is not really up, in my opinion, up right now. We don't, I think, have a good ordinance here to make them go for it.
Yeah, and, and just a point, Ms. Harrison's in turn also on Ms. Joyce, so anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you did not know that, so please help me here.
But we do have an item for us, I hear you, and it's confusing, but we do have it.
I know, and.
We have this appeal, so we do have to make some decision and decide on that.
I want to hear what other, my other commissioners say.
I think, I hear what you're saying, and it is hard, but it's subjective. Me, this wetland crossing is. It's a Dutch dialogue, we have this commitment to living, this commitment to elevation and zoning in the future. And also, we're going to construct a road, just so we can connect. Because the other road isn't quite developed yet, is probably causing me a bit more heartache. Even if you get a federal permit, all the federal permit says is it's not disturbing the wetlands at all. Saying that it needs our local water is flowing to impact. Just because Army Corps of Engineers, waters from both sides of this wetland, it doesn't mean it's not going to have some disturbance on adjacent lands or other things around it. They're, they're looking very, you know, myopic. Developmentally, so for me, we didn't have a benefit, very busy. Not water flow, not just some water flow, but truthfully, and I'm going to be on the soapbox just a second. I've seen a whole lot of docks built across the marsh, people are only walking on them, and they're very highly impacting. So, if we're going to fill and build a road across the marsh right now, that's.
A bridge.
Yeah, we're building. And there's probably just a little bit more work's going to be done shortly to get a road. There's a little example down here, when the tattooed moose went on John's Island. In order to get there, anything done, they had to build a sewer from by the road, expensively, going under the lake. That's allowed for the whole development on that side of it. That poor little restaurant is required to build. So, there are a lot of pressures on John's Island. We need to, protecting that beauty is important. Crossing that wetland with a road, even though it's not a permanent. Trust me, I was in that, I worked environmentally around that for years. As I say it so, does it make?
I agree, I agree with what you're saying on the way.
For me, that's more the problem, because I think in technical review, they can snatch this tree or that park, or this land layout, or whatever it is, but it's that wetland crossing that had on it. And what other precedents that's created.
Joyce, can I pick on you to give that, would you like to say anything on that?
I'm not familiar yet with this whole process and the ordinance and everything, so I'm comfortable putting it there.
So, yeah, so I, I want to pick up on some things my colleagues have said, you know, to talk about the ordinance itself. And, and the fact is, we have to deal with the ordinance, the ordinance is law, that's what we're here to, to do. And we have to make a decision tonight, we can't defer this based on the ordinance.
I don't think it goes anywhere.
The name of the ordinance in, in and of itself is a contradiction in terms, conservation development. And that's really what, with, where the rub is here. Because the way this is, and, and, and I want to be very specific, because that's what this, the denial is based on, the specifics of the ordinance. So, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Schultz's letter. One C, paragraph one C, they're supposed to conserve existing intact, undisturbed forests, understorey, grassland soils, and other upland ecosystems. So, they're supposed to conserve all the natural features of the property, according to the ordinance. But if they develop the property, they can't do that, in every case. They're going to have to disturb forests, whether they're grand trees or not, they're going to disturb something. They're going to disturb understorey, grassland, soils. So, the ordinance is problematic in that, in that way. The second thing, paragraph one F, reduce infrastructure costs by mimicking pre-development site hydrology into the stormwater management plan for development. It says mimicking. Mimicking doesn't mean you have to, I mean, that, I'm just interpreting what that word means to me. The word means you, if you disturb it, you restore it to the way it was before the developers came on the site. It doesn't say they have to leave the one. And, and that's where I'm having my trouble, is this is a development ordinance, we're holding them to a standard. And I, and I, and I agree with everything that my colleague, Ms. Jacob, said about this is going to be a conservation development, having, having a bridge over a, over a wetland that kind of functions well. Whereas functions as well as any wetland on John's Island functions. So, that's where I'm having my difficulty is, is a development, after all, this is a development ordinance, even though it's called conservation development, it's really more of a low-density, low-impact development ordinance than it is a conservation development ordinance, because to conserve means you don't develop it. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm just kind of throwing those out there to my colleagues, because if, in my mind, that's kind of where this whole thing come, this is the, the rub that we're, that we're dealing with.
I hear more from one of the producers, I'm struggling with myself.
So, I think there's a part of this, so there's a process that's outlined in the ordinance. But at the same time, there's some definitions that create conflict with the concept of development, which is what I'm hearing from you. But also, I think what I'm hearing is a conflict in understanding, people like to check the box, and if the box is checked, then you can move forward to the next step. And what is concerning is whether or not the boxes are checked, and versus whether or not you have a gut instinct about it. And so, what we're going on, it's kind of this gut instinct of, does it appear to conserve, but also create the type of density? And I, and I, because this ordinance is also supposed to support workforce housing, and, and, and so, will, so that's a component of this ordinance, and so, we have to, are we supporting it by using these kind of, this gut, this guttural instinct about whether or not there's, there's the conservation to it? And I, and I think one other part is, is that the mimicking, I think, is an impossibility to mimic it. You can't, so, in that term of art, are you saying mimic it in the way that it presently is operating? Or are you mimicking it in the terms of how much is out, is how much, how much, how and where water is flowing? And so, I think that's a concern as well. And the other part too, is that I think, what I gather from this process, is that there's the documents, but it's also a conversational process. And, and so, the reason why I asked the question about the, the document that was presented off three one, was because if I, over, I, yes, it doesn't say just the lots, the roads, or anything of that nature. But if you overlay what was described, or picked it on three one, with this particular diagram, does it align? And, and I think that's really what my question is, is that in this kind of conversation, does, is there, is there some way of, of matching this up? But my, my concern is, is Eric, is, is this process, are we going to get the best product? Or what the intended the ordinance is? And, and really. you know, this is, this is their test case on this ordinance. And did we, did what was passed and approved, does it act, can it actually ever be met? And if it can't be met, um, I think that's, I think that's where we have to re, we have to consider how this ordinance was actually written. Cause we were kind of pushed into this ordinance a little bit.
No, no, I hear you. Didn't need it again, because they're denied it. And that's, again, that's what we're here to appeal. Ms. Jacobs?
A little bit of a technical question. Harrison, if we agree with staff that they have every right to submit another plan for
I would think so.
Of course, we, this isn't like we're done, done. They, what they, the
That's already, that process already.
Right. We had the first diagram meeting. Proved out a lot of ideas or concerns. I got to strengthen up my vocabulary apparently with feel and this, that, whatever. But, uh, I'm just a happy guy about the environment, but, um, it's, uh, so we told them to go back.
This, this, I think something you said might be correct. This diagram right here, it was better that we're looking. This diagram is really the only diagram we should be looking at. Say, this is the one you looked at. This doesn't meet criteria. And therefore you're denying their pre-application. They've come to us to say, we don't agree with this, but we're getting other information that we may not really should be seeing at this point because the diagram with that narrative that we should be looking at. And if we agree with staff on this, then they could take this and refine this and come back to you in a pre-application process.
So pre-application already occurred. That's the site analysis. That's the very first meeting where they tell.
That they could come back with something.
The ordinance doesn't prevent.
Say that they can.
So really, we're only being asked to look at this stuff.
That's correct. That's supposed to deny. This diagram was denied.
Right. So again, back to terminology, the image that they brought on three, one would be considered a concept plan. We're not, we're not critiquing or, uh, TRC does that. That's, you, you saw the concept plan application in front of you for, uh, Wooddale. We're trying to get to a point where we feel the applicant meets the intent of the conservation by setting aside the first attributes of the site in a land plan diagram in which then they move forward to concepts.
Thank you. This is, in essence, this is a bubble plan. I mean, it's, it's really not even, it's not a con, it's a bubble. And it's a bubble plan that, that just kind of shows, is this a fair ordinance in your eyes? For somebody to bring to you? And, and you, you're in on the discussions, you're giving them information. Is this a fair representation of, and you can make a decision based on the way this ordinance is written now?
That's a fair looking land use plan. It, it has the, this, the different colors representing different land uses. Is it the right land use plan? I can't, you know.
Yeah, we, we focus stress we, it's, I'm not, uh, it's just not me.
Right, right. No, and I, I didn't mean to aim it at you. I, you're the
We debated this. I mean, you know, we debated and we talked a lot.
Our meeting, staff meeting, leading up to the applicant meeting. That's what we were going to say, how we, how we were going to react to that plan. So it's just not one voice.
Yes, I was being. I, um, I, I appreciate Mr. Kay's, I appreciate his comments about, and the owner about just wanting to know the rules of the road. What can we do? I appreciate that. I also, um, don't have a problem with staff feeling like something just didn't right. Cause there, there are a lot of things that are very black and white, what the rules are. And we up here someday, we don't feel like they're that great, but we, we have to do it. And so the intent of all of this is, is very good. And I don't like that we're in this situation. But I don't think, um, if, if there is time for another go at this, um, as Ms. Jacobs has suggested. I just, I'm not ready to vote to approve filling and building a road on, in a wetland on John's Island or anywhere really with, without knowing that we've done everything we can to do it the right way. And so I am, I'm, I'm very conflicted on this. Um, and I think that the applicant has made a really great effort. Um, and I think they're, I believe they're trying to do the, the right thing. But I think there are enough people who have said, we have to, we have to stop checking boxes. And sometimes we just have to, we do have to pause and say, let's not, let's not go there quite yet. So, um, I'm certainly, I, I, I know other commission members may want to comment, but I'm, I'm in favor at this point of upholding staff recommendation.
That's a motion I will second.
Is that, and I'm not trying to put words into Matthew. Is that a, a motion to deny request of appeal?
Correct.
The terminology, right? It would be a motion to deny the, the application.
Yes, to reaffirm staff's decision.
Yes. Now, I, which is, I would, I want to be clear that I want to make sure that the applicant has the ability. I, I, I don't want this thing to be killed forever. I, I'm under the impression that they can continue this dialogue. Fast that they can, they can come up.
Julia can just remind herself and help us. So one more, I believe. So we met the timing. So the planning commission must act and the action of the planning commission is final. So that's final on that. On that diagram. Do you agree, Julia? Yes.
Okay, agreed. So that's just on this plan. They can come back and again, I hear you there and I can't agree more. I mean, I feel like from hearing from the applicant, from the engineers, owner, I think they're trying to do, I believe they're trying to do the right thing. So Miss Leffler said, it's a tough thing to, to read and understand and digest and then come forward with something. But I appreciate the fact that the staff is really dissecting this over and over. Presenting that's denied because as we said, we want to get it right as much as we can. We're not going to be I agree with everything said. And I think we've heard staff. I think if Mr. Bailey is making a motion. I made a motion to affirm the staff decision.
Jacobs is second. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I just had one more comment. Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey said something I think that's really important. Cause at this, and I'm looking at you, Eric, um, at this stage of the process. And then there's been a lot of talk about Mr. Schultz using the word, how would they feel about this? But at this stage of the process, you know, what they're, what they're tasked to do is make sure that the, what is presented to them meets the intent of the ordinance. The, the whole meeting, the letter of the law of the, of all the city stormwater and, and other land development ordinances comes later. So this is really, this is a process about how, how it meets the intent. So there's, there's not, there is wiggle room in there. It is a, it is a process of, well, how does this feel? How does it, how does it meet this intent? And intent, of course, is not, uh, I mean, it's, it's spelled out in the ordinance, but, um, but I think, I think your point is a good one that what staff is charged with doing by this ordinance really is a subjective process. And I know that doesn't feel good for the developer. I don't blame you. I'd be bummed out about it too. But I think, I think what we up here has said is this is a new ordinance. This commission had some, uh, reservations about this ordinance that was passed by city council. So, um, what we're charged with is, is with doing is implementing an ordinance that we, that I admit, I shouldn't say we, I admit is not perfect. So, anyway, I just say all that for the record, because that's
support your motion. And primarily, this is why I'm going to support this motion is as when you read, when you read it in context, the pre-application site part, this is about the conversation and it's not about the fact finding part of going into TRC. So really what you're doing in this pre-application process is continuing the conversation. You may not like the answer that I give you on the first time you asked me to marry you, but but on, but you may like the answer the second time around and what I so, so you're not in love yet. You like it, but you're not in love. So it, but that isn't necessarily what our process here is due. So, but as, but on a fact finding part of this appeal, I think what, what is happening is that you made a determination that it hasn't yet made, meet the intent. They can come back. There's no, there's no hard fast rule that says they can't come back. And so really what I kind of foresee about this appeals process is that, that I think it might be, it might be actually too early in the process to appeal because it isn't, even though you can make an appeal from a determination of staff, I don't think we're really there yet because the conversation is still needs to occur. And, um,
It said the timing of the 60 days and we're at 45 days. So you do have
Right. No, I mean, I, I think we're, they, they made the appeal, but I'm saying, I think the, I think what the part, part of the ordinance that talks about the pre-application is is to create an opportunity to get the best product before you go to TRC. And that's what Eric's job is. That's what, that's what that whole process has been about. And so I can support this motion.
Please, everyone understand, I'm going to go ahead and call for a question unless there's any other comments, commission members. Any all in favor of, they say aye to, and give the motion is, uh, to reaffirm staff position of denying the application.
Correct.
And, and this appeal.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think it's unanimous.
Um, no, I'm not. I, I, I am voting, I'm voting nay, not because I don't, I disagree with everything with what Ms. Jacob said. I'm voting nay because I think the process that we are going through is not a good one. And I think it's unfair that they're the first applicant here and they're getting penalized because we were forced an ordinance that we were not in favor of. And I think it's unfair. And I'm just going on the record as stating my opinion that this is not fair and I'm voting nay.
And I, and I hear you and understand. So there's seven in favor of the applicant, of the motion to deny or staff and there's one opposed. Thank you all. I appreciate your patience. Next applicant, next item. And I'm not going to read, so you all know, I'm not going to read. And the references in the article. Ordinance manuals. Number one, the manual to land use regulation. The only ordinance established student housing, STH district housing for the purpose of identifying sites appropriate for establishment or expansion of student housing uses and to change the zone map, which is part, there are properties designated as, and I'm not going to read this 15 or 20 properties, but they're in the record. Mr. Morgan, is that okay?
It's more than 1520.
There's many, yeah, yeah, many. Yes. And the last ten, so anyway, so that written in the record, Mr. Morgan, are you going to be handling this?
So I've got a bigger picture back now and then I'll let Mr. Spencer refer into any kind of code detail here. But, um, I know we've had a lot of neighborhood concern over this ordinance and, and perhaps there could have been some earlier meetings with neighborhoods and apologize if that didn't happen. But I think the intent here was that what we're going for was a way to encourage student housing in close proximity to College of Charleston. Encourage student housing in locations that it wouldn't be as compacted to the neighborhoods. In other words, pulling students out of, you know, rental housing in neighborhoods and consolidating it in more walk distance around the College of Charleston. Not that everybody is going to, uh, move in that fashion, but it gives more opportunities for this. So that was the intent. And also I think to protect the neighborhoods, uh, with, um, uh, an overlay that would regulate the student housing. Cause right now we don't have any kind of overlays of regulating student housing. And we actually don't even really have a true definition of student housing in Arizona ordinance. So I'll split that. But, um, so what we started out with was, um, um, essentially, and I'm not going to get into all the details in draft. But we started out with some map, with a map that we felt like was, uh, areas in closest proximity to the College of Charleston that had the most potential to have student housing in them that would still be walkable. Keeping, you know, the key thing here, trying to reduce the number of cars, reduce the amount of parking that might have to happen in the surrounding areas and have folks able to walk to the College of Charleston campus. So this was what we started with. The, the, the item, the, the parcels in blue are existing College of Charleston dorms. There also are some other facilities that aren't necessarily owned by the College of Charleston, but serve College of Charleston students. Such as the, um, student housing that was built in this location here between King and St. Philip's Street. That is in the kind of green color, the old, um, Warren Place, uh, as well as Kelly Place. Warren Place is up here, Kelly Place is here, then College of Charleston, more standard dorms that are in this block here. More standard dorms that are in this block here and standard dorms, uh, in these areas of College of Charleston campus. This is down to Wentworth Street here. Um, and then this is King Street going north and south. Uh, the reason we included this area over here is there's a good bit of College of Charleston property as well as a lot of commercially zoned property that could be, you know, you could build student housing in today under current codes. And the reason we included these parcels to the west of King Street, uh, Camp, Coming Street, excuse me, is that these were College of Charleston owned parcels. And I know we've had some concerns from the Charleston Village neighborhood about those. So, um, we have, and, and, and I should follow up by saying, you know, we wanted to have this discussion with you all tonight. We do think that because of the concerns from the neighborhood, that, that tonight is not a good night for you all to make your recommendation on this. But we think that everybody should be heard tonight. And maybe there's some tweaks and things like that that we can make to the ordinance to make it more attentive for the neighborhoods. But in general, we think we started on this from a standpoint of trying to protect the neighborhoods and also provide for housing that might be in close proximity to the college. So we, we have, um, this is the original boundary that we had. Um, and then we have looked at, based on comments from the Charleston Village Neighborhood Association, the idea of moving that line to Coming Street. So even though these are College of Charleston owned properties, this would not be part of the overlay, it would end at Coming Street here. So that was one thing that we've looked at, but I'm sure that you all are going to hear some other comments tonight. And those are things that we can also take under consideration for this when it might come up for you all. And I did think it was important for everybody to understand, again, that just because this overlay is being shown doesn't mean that there isn't already the ability to build student housing in any of these areas. Essentially, all of these areas that are in the overlay at present, uh, are in the proposed overlay. You could build student housing now, uh, because they're either commercially zoned, which allows for, um, uh, multifamily residential at 26.4 units an acre. Or they are residentially zoned with densities up to nearly 20 units an acre or 19 or so units an acre. So it's just the DR two that's here, such as the, um, DR two, DR, excuse me, one app that's over here. So the idea that there couldn't be student housing here until this overlay appeared is not correct. There could be student housing here right now. But this ordinance we found like would keep the student housing in better performance with the surrounding neighborhoods because of the criteria that are in the ordinance. It would require a special exception process, um, for student housing. It's none of that required now, because again, we don't really have a definition of student housing in the ordinance. So, so that is a huge advantage to the neighborhoods because they'd get to know where the student housing is going and may comment on it. That would be a public meeting, BZA, that kind of thing. And I'll let Lee get into that more. Um, there would also There would also be better parking ratios, we think, as well as criteria that if you're gonna have a car, you've gotta park it. At that student housing complex or it can't be somewhere nearby. So those are some of the reasons that we felt like it was an worthwhile effort. We apologize again that the neighborhoods didn't feel as involved early on. I think we're eager to hear other comments from them tonight on this and eager to hear those comments as well. And that's kind of my background on this. And again, our recommendation is is to have discussion on the end to defer action. And I'll let Mr. Batch over add anything he would like to add about how the zoning ordinance itself, the overlay ordinance itself.
I don't really wanna add anything. You did a good job of summarizing it. And so if you have any questions, I'll catch you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else with staff, press? I guess y'all really the applicant on this or?
City is the applicant.
City is applicant, okay. So we'll ask, is anyone in support of this application or this ordinance amendment? Would like to speak? Anyone opposed to this? Yes, and we'll take you one at a time. And again, if you would please tell us who you are and where you reside, we greatly appreciate it. If you'll come forward, thank you. Thank you for your patience, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Carish, and thank you to the members of the commission. I'm Sally Ballard and I live at forty six Warren Street and I've been there for forty two years. Our neighborhood, Brad Cliffield, started two hundred and sixteen years ago. It went from farmland to homes with families of all descriptions. Nowadays, we have a very vibrant community. It's taken four decades for us to protect it and to bring it forward. But we have children. In fact, I think I'm hearing someone outside right now. We have children, we have families, we have people walking dogs, we have people going to King Street for ice cream in the evening. But if this overlay zone comes in for student housing with the lines that it has, as they affect Brad Cliffield. It are going to be overwhelmed with noise and students. They will be right there on Warren Street with us. We would like to ask that we be included in further discussion with the city. About our quality of life because it is being challenged by what is being proposed at the moment. I also would ask, can the city tell us what the plan is for more parking regulations? When all of these students, these two thousand students come in during the next few years? What will happen with the noise regulations? How about the trash being picked up at three o'clock or four o'clock in the morning and ding 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 with it being backed up? These are things that we need to have answers to. We are concerned and we look to the city to help us with the answers. Thank you again.
Ms. Ballard, thank you. And you know, I think of your husband often, thinking of that neighborhood as he worked so hard for that neighborhood as well. So thank you.
My name is Laura Eisenstein. I live at four B Fane Street. It is part of a mixed use community commercial. There are sixteen condominium units there. I've been there for ten years. And two of those, or four of those units face King Street and they are million dollar units. In the ten years that I have lived here, I have seen increased traffic on King Street. I have seen businesses come and go. And I believe that this ordinance will lead to a significant loss, millions of dollars in property tax. Now paid to the City of Charleston to provide services. Because the small businesses that are there will be replaced by things such as you see in Upper King. Bars, music venues. I think it will bring to our neighborhood, and this is part of Charleston Village, drug dealing, sexual assault. More traffic, not enough parking. And that we that have lived there and paid our taxes, whether we are permanent residents or second home residents at sixty percent. Will be penalized for the purpose of student housing. And I believe it's the College of Charleston's responsibility to provide housing, not the City of Charleston. And the residents that would be impacted by this. In addition, the city has recently enacted a business improvement zone of King Street. From Line Street all the way to Broad. It is there for the benefit of tourists, high end shopping, fine dining. And what is this going to do to the businesses that are there? What does Charleston Place think about this? What does the Restoration Hotel think about this? Why also is the Hazel to George Street and King excluded from this? I don't quite understand how these boundaries were developed. Did you have to know a particular city councilman to get out of this? Especially the high end Hamdens, Crokins, businesses that have been there for a long time? And what is the response as well of historic preservation controls?
Thank you for your time.
Sir. Thank you all so much. Glad to be with Phil Rhodes. I'm Sally's neighbor on Warren Street. I will not speak as eloquently as she and I will be referring to. So I apologize. I also want to thank Mr. Miller, who took the opportunity to speak with me earlier, early in the week or last week, I can't remember. We've only had about a week. Mr. Morgan, right. I'm so sorry if I incorrect name, and I was wondering, would it be possible for us to look at the map as we speak? Because I want to again thank the Department of Planning for tackling, for attempting to begin to tackle this issue of student housing and related parking. And as a resident, I really appreciate that. But I do want to ask, I understand that you are deferring and I hope that you will continue to defer and I hope that you will provide us with more and ample opportunity. But input onto this, a very important issue. If you look at this map, it doesn't actually include the College of Campus in an accurate way. I think most of you will be aware that the college maintains facilities of Harbor Walk East, which abuts the. Ragboro and Eastside Neighborhoods. So that's not reflected here. There's, I think it's the School of Computing that is located there. So that's not contiguous to this map. There's Avery Center on James Island. I think all of you are aware of the Marine Sciences Division. That's not on this map. There's been a lot of talk at the College of Charleston and the School of Law merging. The School of Law is located north of Marion Square, so that's not reflected on this map. Then there's the entire north campus of the College of Charleston, which is in North Charleston, which is not reflected on this map and perhaps outside of Perpue. So number one, the map is off. The thinking about what is the College of Charleston? What is contiguous to it and close to it and walk distance from it is completely misrepresented here. Number two, I believe all of you are aware of the extraordinary amount of student housing that has been developed over the past ten years. That is, again, outside this map. There is four hundred meeting, which is in the Eastside Neighborhood, not shown here. There's Summit Place, which is also in the Eastside Neighborhood, which is not shown here. There's Heffler Place in Cannonboro and Elliottboro, not shown here. There's sixty one Vandy, which is right around the corner from us at Ragland Borough, not shown on this map. I don't exactly know. I couldn't tell where the demo building is, what neighborhood it is in. It seems to be in some sort of nebulous area, but that's certainly not reflected on this. All those buildings have been built in the past ten years, specifically built, marketed, sold, and occupied as student housing. Therefore, not on this map. So the map is off and I'm really asked for that reason that it be reconsidered. I would also ask how, knowing that, knowing the vast amount of student housing that has been redistributed around the city. Is that not what the city parking study is designed to achieve? To prevent high density people and cars in the core of the city? Isn't that what we're trying, all trying to do if we're for with that city parking plan to kind of spread people out a little more? Provide transit plans to help move people around city or official ways, rather than just packing them in like sardines into a tiny little area? I would also ask how this ordinance, which, again, if you read the ordinance, there are eight points. Four of them are about parking, not housing. So parking is clearly a very important issue that has to be addressed. But let's look at what's actually happening. If you look at the numbers, which I'm gonna get to a little bit. There are, they claim a reduction in the number of cars, so they're supposed to be in this tiny area. So if that's true, and we're trying to control parking relating to student housing. Why does this tiny area only get the benefit? There's already two student housing units in the Eastside Neighborhood. Why doesn't the Eastside Neighborhood get the benefit of what the parking requirements that this ordinance proposes? There's several other things that sort of misses. Where is the parking exactly? Is it contiguous to the buildings that are being proposed? Is it actually part of them? Or is there some sort of other plan for parking garages to support these buildings somewhere else? Where is it? The ordinance doesn't say that and it really, really, really needs to. The ordinance map is very unclear to me as a layperson. It may be a lot clearer to all of you as professionals. Okay, does a quad of four bedrooms give one parking space or two? All right, if the quad is based on single bed occupancy, the way every ordinance, it is one parking space. But let's say there's a housing crisis such as like the McAllister Dorm being closed down and displacing all the students that it would ordinarily occupy. And somebody needs to double up and now the quad becomes eight people. Because the ordinance sort of says it gets you a little wiggle room in there to get two people into a bed. So now that is wiggle room that you can drive fifty cars through, literally, if you've got a hundred unit. Stretching. I would also point to the very, very, very fuzzy areas of responsibility between what is student housing that's owned by the college? And what's student housing that's owned by private development? Who's responsible for these places? Who keeps them up? Who handles, who polices them? Who does handle the garbage collection? Is it done privately? Is it done by the city? Back to the policing that. My neighbor, as I was mentioning, is the college campus of police responsible for these buildings? Because we, you can see the crisis as plain as we all can from the college itself. Or is it dumping the responsibility for that back onto the city? So in summary, I'm almost done. If this ordinance is good. It's good for a much bigger swath of the city than what you see on this map. And it should be enforced and the residents of other areas should be able to benefit from what it purports to provide. But if it's bad, then it's bad for everybody too. And the ordinance is so unclear that you can't tell if it's really good or bad. So I ask that you defer it and I thank you for apparently deferring it. Until we can weigh in, and I really hope that you will build a strong bridge to facilitate that. As I believe, well, no one has actually pointed out something like that tonight. The posters went up on a Friday. We're here on what day is it? And saying, I mean, like. We as laypeople have really tried to hustle and talk to people and better understand this so that we can come here today prepared to talk to you. And so we really like the opportunity for law input. I don't know if it is within this group's power, but obviously this is a tremendous issue that faces people all over the city. It's time for a task force. I mean. There are so many different constituents and stakeholders and needs and whatnot. This is not a problem that can be solved by one single ordinance at one single meeting of the city office. So enough for me. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Henry Goldbeck, I put a comment online last night, this very afternoon. I'm gonna give you a little just just for the record. Oh, Warren Street. Good morning. I'm sorry. So Mr. Morgan said that at this point, there's no. Said you didn't realize what the part, you don't know what the definition of student housing is. Is there any way the city could work with the existing ordinance? Or dormitories to sort of merge these two together? Because the eight, four years ago. When Lenny Krajec was here as chairman of the zoning, zoning board. Those definitions nip this in the heel with sixty one Vandy. So is it is it time that the definition and. For dormitories can be merged with what is current student housing, which involves kitchens, suites and whatnot? To maybe make a comprehensive plan instead of, you know, instead of adding on top of.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take all the, and then we'll get here from staff, so we'll let you finish. I don't want to cut you off. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Phil Buford. I represent Charleston Village Neighborhood Association. I appreciate that you gave me the comment. Application. We're opposed to the proposed overlay zone, particularly it's crossing over into residential areas west of Coming Street. We also oppose the text of the ordinance, as we believe it lacks clarity. We'd like to be clear that the city did not contact neighborhoods. Or otherwise seek input from citizens most directly affected prior to the submission of this proposal. We were requested this be the first the city can work with the neighborhoods and other impacted parties. Or clearly define this ordinance and to better tailor its boundaries.
Thank you, sir. This man.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Passion during leg with Historic Charleston Foundation, forty East Bay Street. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. I think staff's recommendation of hitting the pause button is really a prudent recommendation. Charleston has struggled with town gown relations and challenges for pretty much as long as I can remember. And while there may be some really good aspects of the ordinance before you this evening. There are also a lot of questions that have been duly raised by residents this evening. So I would encourage the commission to defer this evening. Allow the city and the staff the opportunity to convene the right folks at the table so that we can, we can get this right.
Thank you, Ms. Rolla. Thanks. Okay, so, yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Tom Graham. I'm on the mouthless.
Yes, sir.
I own unit two oh three of three fifty king. My concern about this ordinance is how it will affect the people that are residents of three fifty king. So I oppose the ordinance.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, y'all. Come on up, please.
My name is Sylvia St. Peter. I'm a resident of.
Speak a little closer here. Thank you.
Thank you, six Warren Street.
Thank you.
We've lived in this beautiful city for about five years and really enjoy all of the amenities and balance that come with living downtown. I echo the concerns of my neighbors that there are some issues with safety and livability. That are brought to our attention based on the potential expansion of student housing. As a pediatrician, I understand that good quality education and a healthy environment for students is important and I support that. But I think this could really be done in a way that's in partnership with the community. Preserve the wonderful parts of our city that bring our college its distinction and its beauty. And also preserve the historic city that bring residents and tourists. And I think an effort or a task force would be a wonderful concept to bring that forward.
Anyone else? Please come on up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm Robbie Leslie. I'm partially responsible for all that noise y'all hear out there. It's real good. I'm a father of three with one on the way and we are at forty two Warren Street. Been there for about six years. Been there for about six years. My wife's doing, she's doing great job out there. We, we love living on Warren Street. We moved down there because choir street felt like it was conducive to a family lifestyle. And it's a challenge living downtown. I'm not gonna, not gonna lie to you, raising a, a family with kids and where do they bike? Don't play around that street. Oh, here comes another group of college kids coming about certain hours of the day. You gotta be careful. And we've seen, you know, a lot of things that are a little tribute to the colleges being a negative impact for someone like me living on Warren Street. While there are lots of things that we have, that are challenges for us living there, you know, we, we love living there, and I don't want to move anywhere else, and I don't plan to. But having a dorm be constructed right across the street and the direct impact that it would have on my family would give us cause, a cause to a reason for us to stop and think, how are we raising children here? Do we want to raise them in this kind of scenario? I understand the college needs to grow. It should. The city should be considered as well as how it grows, but such is families. I don't see a lot of my friends and a lot of, it's real easy to move way out of suburbs and get away from the challenges of the city, but we want to be a part of it and, and really be a part of making this place more of what I love. And I don't know how this fits into the conversation. I love to talk parking, how to fix that. I'm hugely in favor of being part of that discussion, as would my wife. But I'm really trying to think about what would this do for families living downtown? And from what I can see right now, a heavy concentration of student housing in this area would certainly drive children away.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've got different problems in suburbs. Will you hopefully stay with us, man, please? Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Adams, and I'm at three forty-eight King. We've been there for three years. We purchased a unit when my son decided to come to school here because there is no housing. And we had the luxury to be able to do so, and I'm here for a few months a year just to make sure. He is one of the better students, or at least during the three months that I'm here, four months that I'm here. We try. I, my backyard, or actually right where I would come in, is right where the basketball arena is. Just all parking. I am right. I am kind of in that little two-block area of where it's kind of trashier. And it's not nice when you go a little farther south and it's not as, I guess, full of the bars as it is a little farther north. But at, even at this point, I, we, because I make him do it as well, clean up the back. We just got our car broken into the other night. We already have stuff like this, and I understand because my son's part of that. So I see it from both angles. I understand that there's a need. But one of the things I have to say, one of the things that was brought up, was the fact that we want to create housing so the students have, don't have far to walk. I can tell you for a fact, we visited many campuses that just being on campus, you had to walk farther to at least get far enough. So if they're sorry, but to walk a little further, I don't think it's a problem. And I think we really should support that and kind of spread it out a little so it's not just on top of everything, raising families. I mean, I am at the luxury now. These are my last couple of kids that I have going through school. So I'm kind of at that stage where, you know, I don't live the same life. I want to be here. That's why we purchased this. This is where I want to stay. But if it's gonna turn into something where all we do is care about only the students, the students need to be incorporated, but families and businesses and people who have lived here for forty and fifty years to create the downtown and to create this area what it is, we can't just turn it over to the school. We just can't. And we need to be, have more input because you're right. I literally flew in yesterday. I had no idea there was a meeting in Rhode Island. So I literally had somebody call me and said, hey, can you read the meeting? I'm like, okay, I don't even know what it's about. All right, I'll try my best. So it would be great even if we just couldn't get, you know, just do something where we had a little bit more input.
Thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I'm Randy Johnson from forty-eight Warren, I mean twenty-eight Warren Street. I would just to echo the parking thing. I know you've heard that a billion times anywhere here. But it seems to me the need for the overlay, I appreciate what the city is doing with setting up some standards and doing things and parking. And I think those things will potentially be dealt with. But coming back to the last conversation, the thing, the intent, I'm a little concerned that the overlay really is almost like an enticement. We, you can do less parking if you do here. So therefore, you know, we'll let you do fifty percent less parking, and we'll try to handle this with the city and monitoring, but we may not be able to. It's like we're, the city is driving all of this by enticing developers to build here because they can deal with less parking and they can build higher density buildings. And I hope that's something we address with this is if you're gonna do less parking, don't do more housing. Make it a park or something. You don't have to do the fifty parking places rather than a hundred. Make it a green space. Make it something. Don't just drive developers there to have higher density, higher profit. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Hannah Warrick. I live in fifty-three Warren. I actually love the students, and I mingle with them every time I walk to King Street. They make me feel twenty years younger. So I, I don't have any problems with the students, but I'm worried. We're actually outside of the overlay zone. We did not get the purple notice. I happened to see it walking my dog one night on the water department building. And I took a picture of it with my camera and went home and booked it up and realized it impacts us as well. There's a huge parking problem already, and I'm confused a little bit about what they're trying to accomplish with this overlay zone. But Mr. Morgan was saying, I'm worried there might be a developer behind it that wants to build apartments that will require less spaces for cars. So I'm wondering if that's maybe behind this. And I wondered if Mr. Morgan was implying that build it, the cars won't come, but they still will. There just won't be a place for them. Around any new developments, and that'll be pushing all the cars, you know, on the streets where there's already not enough parking. So if we could get more information, that would be helpful.
Thank you for being here tonight, ma'am. Who else? Come on now.
So we've heard. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Mr. Morgan, the city is applicant. Can you address anything he'd like to address? He can't address them all, but I think he's addressed, if he'd like to address anything, we'll let him speak.
Sure.
So I probably can't address all the comments that we've heard tonight. But I know that, you know, the intent with the boundaries of the district was that we were trying to come up with the areas that were closest to the college that's, that had essentially zoning in place that could have allowed the type of multifamily residential that right now can happen without any kind of regulation about it other than height and mass and, you know, number of units and things like that. And create the definition for student housing and create a special exception process for it so that the residents could have input within this zone here into the creation of student housing. And our feeling was that the closer it was to the campus, the less need there would be for cars. But we still did have a requirement in the ordinance that if you were gonna have a car, you had to have it in some sort of, I believe it says that leases or original agreements for the tenant shall include provisions that prohibit a resident from having a personal automobile unless an assigned parking space is identified, provided, or assigned onsite for the tenant for the duration of lease for an all agreement. So there's nothing like that in place anywhere else in the city. So that would be a unique aspect to, to cut down on the cars that appear in neighborhoods and things like that. But, but our hope was that by having it so close to the college, it would be, you wouldn't even really need those cars. But, but that was a failsafe. I think that, you know, I mean, I think these folks are making very good comments. I think we would like to go back and revisit it and see if there are things that we could do to make more folks happy with what is being proposed. And, you know, I think we would definitely, you know, like to engage them further on this and have those discussions. I'm gonna see if there's anything else that was a specific question. So other than to say, yeah, right now, we don't really have a definition of student housing. This is a way to create one as well.
So that's gonna close the public aspect of this ordinance, number one.
So, well, first, I'm gonna make a motion to defer this, to defer this ordinance, our, our approval, or recommendation for approval of this ordinance. But just from a perspective, first of all, I think there needs to be a little bit more engagement with the neighborhoods. You know, first thing I thought when I read it myself was, I wonder what Mr. Beller would say about it and tell you're here. And also, the second part of this is that I don't know if the goals are accomplished by limiting parking because you're, because number seven, if I just start at number seven, I just don't, I can't see how that's enforced. And even though contextually, it sounds as though it would work, I just don't see how you can, how you can enforce it because you're a resident and you have an automobile, but yet I don't ever remember the automobile that my, I drove in college being in my name. So, you know, those are, there's so many technical aspects to that. But in addition to that, I do kind of see this as, as an opportunity for us to really kind of stabilize neighborhoods. Neighborhoods have been stabilizing themselves. And, you know, what we, what people always talk about is, you know, students and, and and sometimes those large majors that happen in, in, in areas. And I almost look at this as kind of a confining, as a confinement zone. But really, I think all it does is exacerbates potentially an issue, especially on the private development side as opposed to the college maintaining properties. Because you see them, you see these problems in, in large developments. Even, you know, I know one that is located on Line Street. I pass it and you see all the trash, the, the things that are endemic to responsibility and care when, when you have these kind of four-bedroom, en suite type of housing. So, because it already exists. And so I think, I think what we're trying to do is create a solution, but I don't know if we've fully, fully engaged the public in trying to resolve that question of how do you coexist with students and families and creating that balance? And I, and I think there needs to be more dialogue about that.
So, yeah, this won't kill the discussion, but you're making a motion. We can have second, still have more discussion. So the motion to defer the application, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna support. And I'd like to make a comment because it was a a task force. I have a memory because I helped some person several years ago. One of the town and town committee, and I don't know if it was a city committee, and I thought that committee was.
Apparently it is not, and that's a weakness, I think, that we have. And I, I've already talked to our neighborhood services folks about there are ways to get college engaged in that.
In the exact capacity with the college and the city and the residents coordinate when there was an issue all of a sudden. Process to which those complaints could go and maybe just have dialogue, and then from that dialogue, maybe there was before, so I would go back. The status of the town and town committee. Men that, that created in whatever form it was. Regular basis. Constantly getting higher marks and more students and very high pressure to be right the center of the city with a very successful college. I highly recommend that we get staff looking at that.
Thank you. I support the motion too. I think that the outcomes desired by the city staff as well as the neighbors are probably a lot more similar than you think. And, and so I think more engagement is a good thing. I believe the list of concerns will dwindle quickly as conversations occur. And I would just encourage both sides to assume good intent as you go into those discussions.
Just had, I want to help you out here. Can you explain what an overlay zone is? Because I think there's some misunderstanding about what's, what the intent here is.
So an overlay is typically an additional set of requirements on top of the existing zoning. For example, as I was talking about this area, you know, there already is zoning in entirety of the area that we're talking about, the overlay area. There are already no changes today. You can walk, tomorrow you can walk in and start permitting process for student housing in this area. Already can do that. So what this overlay would do is put these additional criteria on it that we think would help, you know, the neighborhoods, you know, deal with the, the, or have been, not deal with, it's not the right phrase, to have input into the process of planning and developing the student housing in this area. So that's one of the things that we saw as a real positive.
So, and so I think, I think there's something that my colleagues alluded to, and that is sort of the policy that the city is trying to implement here as regards to, to student housing. Because we have student housing, it's been mentioned, there's some over on Morrison Drive and there's stuff, you know, it's, it's kind of spread around, but the intent here is to, I'm trying to describe this to paraphrase, I guess. I'm not stating it as my opinion necessarily, but it's not either. But to, to, to bring back student housing close to the core of the city, close to the college, to keep it from filtering out just around the city, that it's better for the city to have student housing that's don't close to the college. So that's, I'm just stating, I'm just stating what, what the policy issue we're dealing with here. And I think that's, when you go out to the, to the community, that's really what needs to be debated is, is to whether it's good for the city to have student housing, you know, spread all over or it's, it's better to have it concentrated near the college. And then one other thing is, and I've heard it stated a number of times, and I don't think this is true, and that is that the college is growing. The college has a, an agreement with the city that's, that's been in place for many years that it not exceed ten thousand students.
So the student population is not growing. We're just debating about where they should live.
So that's what this is about, and the, and I think the city is, this is a good thing, that the city is trying to get ahead of the curve to get some control over where students live and to, to make the situation better for neighborhoods. And I think this, I think this map will change. I have no doubt that it will as a result of the work that the city's gonna do with the neighborhoods to get your input. But I, I don't think, I think for the citizens who are concerned about this, I think that you should take the city for its word that what it's trying to do is get a handle on student housing and trying to create a situation where there's an additional level of control so that it's not just willy-nilly, students go wherever and developers can go wherever they want to, wherever they have the right to build, then they can build it there. So that there's some transparency about what's happening. So I, I, this is not an effort to encourage more student housing. The students are here. They're living on the peninsula anyway. Anyway, I just, I wanted to try to clear up some, you know, what I think are perhaps some misconceptions about what the city was up to here. And, and, and I think we ought to all embrace this, and if we, if we do, we'll all come out with a better, better.
Mr. Left, just how many times have we seen, he's been on the question a number of years, the housing issue at Charleston come up?
over and over with concerns.
Charlie, I think, you're right behind me, buddy. So, I love it a lot. And, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity to, to get the residents involved. I think that that has not happened. And I think we absolutely have to do that. We have, having children in the neighborhood, I grew up on Charlotte Street. And I, I, I loved it. And I, I hope that we have far more families moving back on the peninsula. And that is truly very important to me, but also the safety of the students that go to the College of Charleston is also very important. So, let's all get together and come up with something.
Great. And I'm gonna support the motion for a number of reasons. I think we've all heard, we need more input. I hope Mr. Seekings is involved, is, he's, I think he's a councilman. Most of that downtown area, a lot of it. So, I hope he's in the middle of this, and I know he was in the past. So, whether it's town and gown or whatever, to get these folks together with the college, talk about it in the city, before the ordinance man is brought back up, so that there's more feeling that there's buy-in by everybody. I think that's the key of all this. So, you know, that, I'm older than many of y'all, but I'm, in 1974, I went to Charles, and I lived on Hazel Street. Forty-two Hazel. And people said, you live way over on Hazel Street. Well, the only reason I think we, Jack Owens, below me, and some of you may know Jack. But I think the only reason we, the Astonborough Neighborhood Association was okay with us, is my next-door neighbor was Chief John Conroy. He kept us, he kept us very calm and quiet. And when we weren't, he then moved me and Jack over to Mount Pleasant. But anyway, so there's a motion by Ms. Harrison, I think a second one is Jacobs, if I get it right. There's no other discussion. All in favor of the motion to defer this application? Signify by saying aye. I think everybody's, thank you. And thank you all for coming out. Thank you for your patience with us tonight. If you want to get it right, that's all.
What does it mean when it's deferred? Does that mean we need to come back next?
Well, they'll be noted. Well, hopefully, there'll be more noted.
New notices when it would be set to come back up.
Like, what does that mean? Well, hopefully, you'll see some neighborhood meetings and things with the city, encouraging people to come to meetings, to get more information before, way before that. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So, number two, under Orders Amendments, number two, is the amendment Article Two Land Use Regulation, Part One, Description of eight zoning districts, overlay zones, subsection five, fifty-four, that's two oh one D, based on district status and residential capital. Totally notice to correct scrivener's error. Mr. Satchell or Ms. Hart? Can we do two and three together? Okay, great. Let me read the, the record, the ten articles two, land use regulations, part three. Table of permitted use of chapter four, the city of Charleston, totally notice to correct scrivener's error. So, we're gonna take two and three together, Ms. Hart. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This is not gonna be anything like that. This is just that we discovered a couple of errors on that ordinance, and we sent this amendment for you to correct those. One is the, there is permitted use on the residential office would permit multiple, multifamily dwelling units, and it's not permitted. So, we just need to delete that sign from the ordinance. And the other one is that we were missing two maximum density, and the SR seven and the SR eight zoning districts. And we need to insert those only.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Would anyone like to be heard on Orders Amendments, number two or three, and the big ordinance, ordinance we have now? Like to be heard, there's a motion by Ms. Lepus, second one is the same.
I was, I'm just curious, how do y'all find these scrivener's errors?
I'm from Ms. Jacob's office. That's usually the way they find.
That was a good idea. On the agenda for last month's meeting, I think it was, and we were looking at a density that was allowed on a, for a zoning of a property. And both Christopher and Robert Summerfield were like, well, no, that's not the, yes, that's the, the density, no, this isn't. And we started counting, we were counting forward, they were coming backwards. So, we were like, oh, we are missing that one. And the other one was the same thing. We were looking for multifamily and a residential office, and that's not permitted. Oh, well, here we are, fixing things.
That's never been a problem. Nobody's ever tried to get. That's interesting.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna go to zoning.
We have to vote.
I think we did.
I had a question, so I interrupted.
Sorry. So, all in favor?
Who was your second?
Harry was the second.
Lepus was the second.
Mr. Lepus is the second. Thank you. So, Ms. Lepus has made a motion, second message was saying, to approve items one and two.
Two and three.
Two and three. Did I cut you off? All in favor, signify by saying aye. So, zonings, we'll take any of those together, though. Mr. Morgan, all the zonings would be separated. Mr. Morgan, all the zonings need to be separated. City Council knows more than once. Zoning, number one, eighteen ninety and eighteen, eighteen eighty-six, Ashford Road, fourteen oh seven, Adele, Ancrum Hill, West Ashford TMS number three five oh seven oh 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 two seven oh two eight oh four eight, point three five acres, request only CT. It was zone Ashford River, quarter, unity, commercial overlay district, and the county. Mr. Morgan?
So, this is another one that we're really excited about, because it's gonna provide for location for more affordable housing. This is, the owner of this property will be the Charleston Redevelopment Corporation. I think Johnson from that organization's here, and he'll be able to explain to all what they're, they're planning here. But just to orient you all to the site, this is Ashford River Road. This is, for those of you who know this area, Ashford River, southeastern galleries is over here, and the retail area across the street. It's just northwest of the Ashford River and Sam Redenberg intersection, but before Ashford River branches off to the Paul Can Trail Parkway. This is an older settlement area here. Is adjacent to an existing gas station here that's owned limited business. And then there are some other houses on the Able Street or Dale Street area, excuse me, my glasses are getting bad. And then there is a mix of commercial and residential function on Ashford River Road in the area as well. We've got our current new city plan that calls for this area to be suburban in nature. And that is based on, you know, the existing single-family houses here. There is this opportunity for affordable housing that has gotten us to be more willing to accept a little bit greater density here. Also, because the, the, the city and other organizations have helped fund, found this organization that is gonna build the affordable housing here. So, we know that it will be permanent affordable housing, but I'll let Mr. Johnson talk a little bit more about that. So, that gives us the comfort in endorsing a little bit more density here. And typically, we would only be endorsing for, if it was, you know, just private market rate development. This is the property that is subject to this annexation and then zoning. And I can see the single-family residents to the left and the gas station to the right. There's Ashford Road up front, Ashford Road. And our recommendation is for approval for the CT for the site. And I will let Mr. Johnson explain how they plan to, to take good use of this property.
Mr. Johnson, we'd love to hear from you, and thank your patience as well.
Chairman, and then there was one. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be with you. For those of you who may not be familiar, the Charleston Redevelopment Corporation is a five oh one C three developer and fencer of affordable housing. We include the communal community land trust to maintain in perpetuity affordable housing. The CRC also is homeless. So, we are housed in the city, and so this provides a mixed-use opportunity to have housing, the second floor of housing on the first floor, and the first to provide office space for the CRC. A little bit of landscape space that might go a little bit of virtual office space, for smaller, smaller physical spaces. We would have some dispersion in the affordable housing, ranging from eighty percent of AMI to one twenty percent of AMI. So, we're certainly excited about the prospect. Certainly, request the, the, after working with staff, look at commercial transitional versus limited business, and have a conversation on what's the best and most conservative way to achieve that, and we thought that way to achieve the objective.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And again, would anybody would like to be heard on this? And, and Mr. Johnson, thank you again for your patience. Any questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman. No? Okay. I'm, I'm very excited about this project. But I drove that, I drove out there. And where my heartburn is, is the change on Adele Street, with that little residential property to transition. Availability from Ashley River Road to your
So, Adele is one which you consider as an unimproved road, if you will. It's a dirt road. We, the site currently has two curb cuts on Ashford Road, one through two existing parcels that face Ashford Road. The design concept is a building footprint that's roughly six thousand square feet that would face on Ashford River Road. We would abandon the most northern, the east. The, the curb cut is adjacent to the house. We would abandon that and just use the curb cut that's adjacent to the gas stations, providing one-way entrance into the site, so that people aren't coming around to Adele to get into the site. We are, we've had some email exchanges with STDOT in terms of how that's gonna be achieved. We originally showed a twelve-foot drive, I think there are, that's fourteen feet. And the correct curb cut is three feet from the gas station, but it extends twenty feet, so we're gonna have to make that five feet to stop that property. So, we're trying to work to navigate that as well. And some of the staff comments, as we addressed, initial site comments are relative to parking on the real line that faces Adele, is to, I use my words, not staff, but we, we might end up losing one space to make that transition to Adele work better, to, 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 to better.
Should go into Adele Street.
It would be. That would be primarily the, the, the street. Rockington, I think in terms of making a six or left turn on Ashford River Road, is a little bit better of a location to do that than trying to do it back off right there next to the gas station. So, so the egress going that way would be out of Adele to Rockton.
So, all the rest of the Adele to exit.
For exit, not, but, but so we don't have to necessarily the entrance as well.
I'm just gonna explain the reasoning. One hundred percent convinced that you are developing this site. There's gonna be a hiccup at some point in time, because there is. And we have just zoned that tiny little only access by a dirt road.
See, the CRC intends to maintain that opportunity, that affordable housing, for its office space. And our board is very much expansive in terms of representation across the community to make sure that that happens. And I will convey that concern to the board.
Don't, Ms. Jacobs, say something properly after this. Ms. Jacobs, I promise. No, no, I hear you, Donna. I hear you, Ms. Jacobs. CT.
If for any reason that doesn't happen the way they're they don't have a CT zoning.
Other commission members, questions, comments, motion?
For approval.
Ms. Lepus moves for approval, the second, Mr. LaSane. Any other questions, comments?
I just got a question. How many proposed units were you considering?
Six residential units, and those two.
So, there's a motion by Ms. Lepus, the second, by Mr. LaSane. All in favor, signify by saying aye. There's eight in favor, none opposed. Thanks. And that has it. Anything we can take together, question, all to be separate.
The last ones we can, but this next one also needs to be separate. So, this is twenty-nine thirty-one Maybank Highway on Johns Island. The request would be for commercial transitional. Right now, it's in the county under highway corridor overlay with limited commercial as well there. So, we feel like that's a, a appropriate transition from the county's only. There's also commercial transitional to the north. And we also have in our future land use, this as what we call neighborhood edge, which would encompass something like commercial transitional. So, it's in line with the comprehensive plan as well. The edge is, is those types of uses that couldn't fit in the middle of the neighborhood, and it also is six to twenty units, they are recommended. This is the existing property. There is a structure there that would be reused, as we understand it, for some office space, as well as some commercial space. And this is Maybank Highway in front of the property. Thank, and we're recommending.
Thank you. Anyone here like to be heard on this item? If not, that, for, 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 Ms. Lepus, I have approval. Second one, Ms. LaSane, any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so the ayes, it's eight in favor, zero against. We can do three and four together?
Yes, sir.
Three is twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-one fifty-three, West, West Ivors Road, Brooklyn Terrace, TMS number before three oh six oh oh two oh nine, point two four acres. SR one is requested zoning, it was SR four in the county, and four is twenty-one fifty-eight, twenty-one fifty-four, West drivers, so next, right next door, Brooklyn Terrace. TMS number three four three oh one oh oh one one five, and one to be six. Same thing, request city wants SR one, it was SR four in the county. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, again, standard R four to SR one in the city. And just so you all see where these parcels are. Here we have the first one on West Rivers, it's a vacant lot. And then across the street, we have those two, they're across the street from the vacant lot. And that's the three parcels that are going to SR one in the city.
Wait, anyone like to be heard on these items?
Okay, come on. Let's do it. Move for approval.
Approval, Ms. LaSane, second. Any other discussions? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye. And you want to oppose? Eight in favor, zero against.
I would like to have a discussion about this.
The last item is from my state's staff.
Yes. So, we, I know it's late. And I hate that it's kind of this late. Shelby Sweet, who's worked with Eric Coleman, to look at an issue that we all, I think, feel strongly about, which is the missing middle housing. And Shelby just has a very brief presentation of what she's found, and some ideas, and I'll let yours, and Shelby.
Thank you. Thank you both for your patience.
I'll be faster if I can move on myself.
This little house.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for listening to me today. I appreciate it. I just want to talk to you guys a little bit about the missing middle housing that we already have in the Wagner Terrace area. So, just to give you a little definition of missing middle housing, so it is a range of multifamily housing that can be intertwined with regular house-scale buildings in single-family residences. So, a couple of the characteristics are, usually they're about two to two and a half stories, they're about four eight units. And they usually have about one walk-through parking space per unit as well. And some of the benefits to having that would be walkability, there's a smaller footprint for the amount of density. And it would be able to create a more diverse housing options for areas. Okay. So, this is a current map of the residential typologies within Wagner Terrace. The pale yellow color is the single family, but as you can see, there's a lot of intertwined colors, and most of them are duplexes and townhomes. But the important takeaway is that twenty percent of the residences within Um, but the important takeaway is that, um, twenty percent of the residences within Wagner Terrace area are missing middle housing at the moment. Um, so in comparison to that, um, there is the current zoning has mainly eighty-seven percent single-family residence, eight, ooh, nine percent, and four percent diverse family housing. Um, so it's a little bit misconception, um, the housing issues going on there. Um, okay, so there are ideal, idealized specifications, um, based on Optico's design company. Um, he was the one who coined the term missing middle housing. So this is an idealized duplex. Duplexes have two units, um, and they're usually detached. Um, so an important takeaway is the thirteen units per gross density, which is great. Um, and here is an example from Wagner Terrace of a duplex stacked. Um, so as you can see, the gross density would be a bit higher, um, for this one. And it is also a little bit bigger in size, but it still has enough space to have empty. Um, so this is an idealized triplex. They, they like stacked duplexes more than anything, um, so it's three to three and a half stories, it's detached, and they're usually, um, stacked on top of each other. Um, so this is an example from Wagner Terrace. As you can see, it's not, uh, your typical triplex. Um, something important to note is that these buildings can still be multifamily without them looking multifamily, um. I thought that's about it. Uh, anyway, um, so, so there's a fourplex. Fourplex means that there are four dwelling units within, uh, usually two stories stacked. Um, and this, the ideal one would be eighteen units per acre for gross density. Um, so the first fourplex that we had in Wagner Terrace that I looked at was this one, in one twenty-one Hester, just because it just looks like a regular home. Um, it fits in really well with the fabric and the footprint of the area. Um, and the gross density and the building width and depth are very similar to that of the idealized. Um, the second one that I looked at was, uh, the Longborough Estate. Yeah, um, just because it is a rather new build and they're very nice, and they are almost exactly what the idealized specification would be, and the gross density is very high at forty-four point four units per acre. Um, so that means you can get a beautiful missing middle without any compromise the look and feel of the Charleston. Um, so this is an idealized townhouse. They have it so that it is a single unit, um, versus the entire townhouse together. Um, so you look at the one from Wagner Terrace, it is actually the exact same, uh, area and width and depth of the idealized. Um, it also has a higher gross density, I'm not sure how. Um, I have just a little summary. Um, missing middle housing, it exists and in these neighborhoods, and they look great and they're part of these desirable neighborhoods, um. And the next step should really be studying where we could find some vacant lots to figure out how we can incorporate more missing middle housing in the downtown area. Anyway.
Shelby, where are you from?
Uh, I'm from, uh, it's near Charlotte, like Wiley South.
Okay, you're in college or?
Yeah, I went to, yes, I'm at the College of Charleston's Master of Community Planning Policy and Design.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for your work, and thank you for working with the city. I know it's, you know, it's good, it's very good, and I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you guys for taking it out.
Looks great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, we have anything, any updates?
Sure. I know that you all were interested in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Which, uh, Robert has been working on RFP for our new zoning code that's gonna be based on elevation. And, uh, I think he anticipates wrapping that up in the next week or so. We're gonna get it approved, so hopefully hit the streets in May. Um, that, the money on that wasn't really available till later in the year, I think more mid-year, so you didn't have really gotten a consultant on board without that money available, so if going out in May should be on track to, to, to get that underway this summer. Um, and then the, um, downtown, or as we're calling it, the peninsula plan, we are working, our staff is working on, um, uh, RFP for that, and we hope to get that out again in another month or so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Thank all the staff. Y'all's great work.
I had, uh, just a more of a comment than anything else. I, I know that I haven't had a chance to meet our, our planning director kind of in, in, in an interfacing way, and maybe at our next meeting at the end.
That, I, I met him only because I've sat down in his office and talked to him a little while, but I've only seen him on Zoom. Yeah, so, uh, and I, and I. Yeah, can we request if he come and, uh, hopefully the agenda be, we can spend a few minutes with him?
Right, yeah.
See what his vision, I'd like to hear his vision.
Yeah, that's just my second meeting.
I figured that'd be. I'll second. That wasn't easy. Soon cut out, soon makes it quick. Yes.
Exactly.
I hope you will.
I am.
I hope I didn't pick on.
Thank you for giving me my update.
No, no.
I mean, for the next, like, for the next twelve weeks.
We need you and we need your help.